Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Free Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes for approval. A few comments, and then I have a couple presentations. Start off by just, you know, to quote the Madison Eagle from last week's editorial, and the quote was, "We have had countless occasions over the years to be proud of Madison, but never more so than this past Monday night." And I thought that was a very appropriate quote, and I'm not only proud for the action of passing the resolution declaring Madison a welcoming community, but I'm also proud of how the residents and our visitors conducted themselves as they shared their thoughts. There were passions from multiple points of view, as we know, for those that were here, and everyone was very respectful of each other, and this is what Madison is always, always about. And if you missed the meeting, I highly recommend that you go to Rosenet, to the Mayor and Council page, and pull up the video of the meeting. And I apologize to those that volunteered to be part of the committee going forward. I sent the link to the budget part of the meeting instead of the welcoming resolution, and so I think they think I was trying to hook them into watching the budget, but that was not my intent. But it truly, if you didn't, if you were not here last Monday to see that video, is moving. I shared it with some friends over the weekend, and there were tears in their eyes, so please take time to do that. The Speaker is giving an understanding of the issues that many of us not only face today and possibly face in the future, but also the challenges they had to overcome. And this, not just recently, this is a good way to understand how immigrants for 100 years overcome challenges. And as mentioned last Monday, the next steps include continuing the dialogue, and as I just said, we have over 20 volunteers to help pull together a community as we put our words into actions. And we will also be working closely with Interfaith Council, who already are working on the concept of creating a beloved community, a sense of all working together. And if you are interested in working on this committee, taking us further, you can send me an email at mayor@rosenet.org and just put welcoming community in the subject line. And I want to recognize our employees of the month. I know at least one of them is in the audience right now, for the employees of the month of February, Marlene Dolan. Marlene's back there. There you go, Marlene, way to go. Along with Ben Samara and Joanne Grillo of the Madison Health Department for their commitment, professionalism, and dedication during the recent transition of the Health Department. So, Marlene, please share our congratulations to Ben and Joanne. And to the library report, this week's activities at Madison Public Library on the Saturdays, be date with a book, and that is at 2:00 PM on Saturday the 18th. Also, on the 18th, at 8:00 PM, the 36th Annual Black Maria Film and Video Festival, co-hosted with the Madison Arts and Cultural Alliance. And on Sunday the 19th, at 2:30, the Shamblains, Paul and Rochelle, at the Movies. The Shamblains will perform selections of the bountiful trove of songs featured in motion pictures. And next Monday, the 20th, there will be a special event for children, Eyes of the Wild. Of course, 20th is a holiday. Traveling Zoo at 4:00 PM, registration is required. And the Friends of the Library are planning their annual gala for September, March 25th at the library, so look for invitations for that. And the Winter-Spring Drew Mini Course Series continues, and it's not too late to sign up for two spring classes, The Politics of Ireland from Easter Sunday to The Celtic Tiger, and The Sixties and the Vietnam War in America. And also, a reminder that winter is a great time to visit a museum, and the library continues with the Museum Pass Collection funded by the Friends of the Library, includes passes to 15 museums in the metropolitan area and are available to Madison library cardholders, so you don't have to pay museum fee. Come down to make presentations. Sam Mantone, please come forward. At our reorganization meeting at the beginning of the year, we present medallions for those that have served on committees for at least five years. And Sam has served on, which probably is, not to put other committees down, but I think this is a very special committee, and my favorite, because it is a patriotic celebration committee. And for those of us who live in Madison realize what a great job they do on various events, especially Memorial Day, to recognize those that have given their lives to our country, and other days, just other heroes that serve our country. And Sam served on the Patriotic Celebration Committee from 2009 until 2016, and I just want to thank you for all your effort on behalf of the Borough of Madison. Thank you very much. Would you like to say, all right? I'll send a note to my brother, he wants to get the pictures. Sam and my brother go way back, so, good friends. If I can have Harry Delgado from the Accreditation Program, New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, because I have a special presentation today. Actually, if you don't mind, if you're more comfortable there, that's fine, yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to say, surprise.
Yeah, don't.
Mayor, thank you very much, members of the council. It is indeed a privilege, and I think it's quite appropriate tonight, as you're recognizing the employees of the month, that I get to come here and recognize your police department is one of the best police departments in the state of New Jersey, and if you take into consideration that they follow best practice nationally, perhaps in the nation. So, just to add context to the accomplishment of your police department, the Madison Police Department, must tell you that there's over 470 agencies in the state of New Jersey that would be eligible to apply for accreditation. To date, there's only 172 that are accredited. That is because of the rigor of the process itself, so many more would like to, and they're in the process, but certainly, they haven't achieved that. So, out of those, you say only about 34% of those agencies are accredited to date. So, that shows you that the Madison Police Department is joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies in the state of New Jersey. So, I know you have a full agenda, but if you indulge me for two minutes, I'd like to share with you the significance of the achievement of the Madison Police Department. So, accreditation is a process which they started about two years ago. The foundation of accreditation lies in the adoption of standards containing a clear statement of professional objectives. Accreditation is a progressive and time-proven way of helping law enforcement agencies calculate and improve their overall performances. It is a certification by an independent review and authority, in this case, the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, that the accredited agency was carefully measured against an established set of state and national standards. And in the case of the Madison Police Department, I'm glad and proud to say that has not only met, but in many instances exceeded, accepted practices in the field of law enforcement. Research shows, and I know we're talking about budgets, so I'll share this with you for the benefit of the public, that accredited agencies have 11% fewer police professional liability claims, 18% fewer work compensation claims, and 31% fewer auto liability claims. But besides those important fiscal advantages, there are other important benefits to accreditation. Accredited agencies are better able to defend against lawsuits and citizen complaints. Accreditation provides objective evidence of an agency's commitment to excellence in leadership, resource management, and service delivery. Government officials can be more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently amid community needs. Accreditation embodies the very important precept of community-oriented policing. It creates a forum in which police and citizens work together to prevent and control challenges confronting law enforcement, and provides clear direction about community expectations. Accreditation standards give the chief, approved management system or written directives, sound training, clearly defined lines of authority, and routine reports that support decision-making in resource allocation as well as reduce liability. And as I see many here tonight, officers in accredited agencies are able to take pride that they've been objectively recognized for their professionalism and adherence to the highest standards. Now, I mentioned before, earlier rather, that the process takes approximately two years. And at the end of two years, we literally physically come and do a fiscal inspection, and the police department has to prove, should have to show tangible proofs, that they meet the 105 standards in the state of New Jersey. Now, many of those standards require more than one proof. So, not only do we come here to raise the level of stress, we need to make sure that those proofs are here. I must tell you that less than 1% of the police departments that are accredited in the state of New Jersey actually have what we call a perfect onsite. Well, count the Madison Police Department among one of those. There was not a single issue that was found that we could actually scrutinize and fore. That's how successful they have. So, to finish, in the report, it was revealed by the, and shared by the assessors, that under the leadership of Chief Darren Datchen, I told him I was gonna, the Madison Police Department's sworn and civilian members are extremely dedicated to providing their community with superior service. The dedication was observed by the accreditation team during the onsite visit. And again, I repeat, exemplary and exceptional, the fact that they have no issue found during the final onsite, and trust me when I tell you that, we try, we look for everything. So, it is the opinion of the assessment team that the Madison Police Department is a highly professional and committed agency, which exemplifies all of the tenants of law enforcement accreditation at the state and national level. So, therefore, on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Commission, I congratulate Chief Darren Datchen, Sr., Accreditation Manager Lieutenant Joseph Longo, the members of the Madison Police Department, the Mayor and Council, and those citizens that they so proudly serve for achieving state accreditation, joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies that made this important commitment to excellence in policing. So, to all, congratulations.
This is actually a very proud moment for me and my department. I'm not going to get into what it took to become accredited. Chief Delgado did an exceptional job explaining the program and what we've been through for the past numerous years. Being chief, it was easy for me just to say, I want this done. So, although we all worked very hard on getting accredited, there's one person that was absolutely instrumental in the success, that's Lieutenant Joseph Longo. I can remember Joe coming into my office and me explaining to him that I, you know, one of my goals as being chief is to become an accredited agency. Joe took on the role of accreditation manager with enthusiasm. Although I do remember one or two meetings where I had to talk Joe off the ledge. Joe did this on top of his other administrative duties. He did this while starting his family, having children, building a house, studying for promotional exam. So, to say that Joe was under a lot of stress was an understatement. Joe, come up here and accept this accreditation certificate. Joe, I'm proud of you. This is your certificate. Congratulations.
And to say we are all so proud, it would be an understatement. Thank you so much for all the work, and Chief, to everyone in the force, thank them, because this means so much to Madison, for all the reasons that Harry outlined, and it makes us proud, and be happy that we have one of the best police forces in the country. Thank you. So, as we give reports, counsel, you may need to speak a little bit louder, because I don't know if we have much volume on the microphones, but, is it coming out? All right.
Not here.
Don't knock over the lamp now. All right. We have volume. Now, to reports from committees, Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Engineering Department, on the buildings, especially Hartley Dodge Memorial, that is due for a soil remediation and site remediation at the rear of this particular building. We received seven bids, and the recommendation for the award is on the agenda, so that's going to be moving forward. As far as roads are concerned, the 2017 road construction has been advertised, and with the date to receive bids by March 16th. Three NJDOT grant applications for Greenwood Avenue Improvement Project, Bike Way Improvement Project, and Crosswalk Improvements were submitted, honored before February 3rd. Parks, they have received proposals from Nickerson Incorporated through Middlesex County Cooperative Bid System for the purchase and installation of a set of bleachers and a new press box at the Madison Recreation Complex Fields. Meeting will be held to coordinate schedule once a contract has been awarded. On Central Avenue, we have a new development with a water main replacement project that has really increased the scope of the field of all that work that has to be done. But it was based on a field inspection of the condition of the valves and the hydrants. Morris County has been advised of the increase in costs and schedule, and agreed to reschedule resurfacing work as required. Plan and bid documents will be completed by the staff as soon as possible. I'm going to make a recommendation that the people who are very interested in the Central Avenue project also be advised that we are going to replace that whole water main system that is like 100 years old right now, so it's in dire need. The Lane Company completed videotaping of the well casing at Well D, showing the positive impact of redevelopment work. Various well components are being evaluated for replacement. Also, on the rehabilitation of Well A, Mott McDonald Company has provided a set of draft plans and specifications for that rehabilitation, so we look forward to that. I don't have to remind everybody that we had probably about nine inches of snow just recently. So, from Public Works, everybody was out, including the Road Department, the Parks, Sewer, and Mechanics. So, they plowed, they salted, and they removed snow, and I think they did a good job. Haven't heard any complaints, so that's good. As far as the Road Department is concerned, they will continue to do the pothole repairs, and they'll try and get that done as soon as possible. They're finished picking up Christmas trees. The downtown benches have been refinished and will be put back out in late March. They're continuing with cleaning the parks. The Sewer Department is right now working on Fairwood Retaining System, operating maintenance and station maintenance. The Mechanics Department, that never stops, is vehicle maintenance, scheduling future projects, and they're working on a special project for the Fire Department. From our Construction Department, that works very hard, in the month of January, they issued 172 permits. That's 61% more than it was last year. Their updates were increased by 16%. Inspections performed were 598 in the month of January, which is a 29% increase from 2016. Certificates of occupancies were also up like 38%. Certificates of approval issued were down a little bit for some reason, but that's okay. Temporary certificates of occupancies, we didn't have much of those issued. And they did process approximately 207 payments, which was an increase of 54%. Oprah requests completed, which takes up a tremendous amount of time. There were 32, and that was an increase of 33%. So, the construction fees collected in the month of January, and this shows all the hard work that goes into this, $480,632. And the difference in from last year and this year is 1,237% increase. So, keep going, Russ, don't get tired. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, they responded to a total of 129 calls for assistance, and the breakdown of the calls are as follows: 29 general alarms, 21 still alarms, 22 investigations, and 57 EMS calls. There were a number of significant incidents. On January 19th, at 11:04 PM, the Fire Department assisted Morris Township. Fire Department had a fire at the Honeywell Complex. On Columbia Turnpike, it was a large rubbish fire inside of one of the buildings. On January 24th, at 5:42 AM, the Fire Department was dispatched to a garbage truck fire on Main Street in front of Coviallo Brothers. This was a compressed natural gas-powered truck, which posed very dangerous and hazardous challenges to the firefighters. They received mutual aid from Chatham and Florham Park. The Madison Police, Madison Ambulance, and Electric Department responded as well. On January 25th, at 18:00 AM, the Fire Department was dispatched to a structure fire at the Community House on Cook Avenue. The fire was in the third floor apartment, there were no injuries. They received mutual aid from Chatham, Florham Park, Morris Township, and Cedar Knolls Fire Departments. The Madison Police, Madison Ambulance responded, as well as the Chatham Ambulance Squad, and Morris County Rehab Bus and Air Truck. And then again, on January 26th, at 12:21 PM, the Fire Department assisted Morris Town Fire Department at a commercial structure fire at George and Martha's Restaurant on Morris Avenue. Madison firefighters were assigned to ventilate the roof by cutting several holes. Other Morris County Fire Departments assisted Morris Fire Department as well, there were no injuries. On January 31st, at 10:35 AM, the Fire Department assisted the Chatham Fire Department at a residential structure fire on Chatham Street. There was a fire in the second floor walk-in closet, no injuries. There were two departments, two drills, and one firefighter started his fire in one training class at the Morris County Fire Academy. 27 commercial fire inspections were conducted, three safe house inspections were made, and 16 resale COs inspections were made. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Clerk's Office, in anticipation of the June 6 primary election, the filing deadline for nomination petitions for municipal office is Monday, April 3rd. Forms are available in the Borough Clerk's Office. Also, voter registration forms, as well as mail-in ballot applications, are also available in the Borough Clerk's Office or online at morriselections.org. And the Finance Report, from the Payroll Department. Over the next few months, the Borough will be transitioning over to a new payroll processing system. The system will include time clocks, which will be implemented in all departments throughout the Borough. From the Tax Department, the first quarter taxes went well. We want to thank Mary, Hattie, and Chrissy for all their hard work. The Preliminary Equalization Table was issued by Morris County Board of Taxation. This document is used to equitably split up the county tax among the 39 municipalities. There are many other steps in the process before the final tax rate is confirmed, including the adoption of the county and borough budgets. From the Finance Department, the Borough has large payments that it will be making February 15th, including $2.47 million to the county, which is the quarterly payment of county taxes, $53,015 in interest payments from the Open Space Trust Fund for the MRC long-term debt, $3.4 million to the Board of Education, which is the monthly payment of the school taxes. This evening, we will hear from various department heads about their budgets, their capital needs, their goals and objectives. The presentation from last Monday's budget hearing is now on Rosenet. The link to the video of last week's meeting is also on Rosenet. The next scheduled budget hearing after this evening will be Wednesday, February 27th, at 8:00 PM. Residents are urged to attend. Thank you.
And Utilities, Mr. Walkin.
Thank you, Mayor. The Electric Department's been involved in several high-visibility projects here in Madison, one of which was the continuing work on riser pole construction and cable terminations for the KRE development. Another, as I think you're all aware, Greenwood Avenue was particularly hit hard in the recent storm, and although power was restored very quickly, there are still ongoing repairs to poles and overhead cables on Greenwood. And similarly, on Main Street, the site of that garbage truck fire that melted everything above it, again, power was restored very quickly, but repairs to the overhead cables have just now been completed. The rest of the work had to do with more routine maintenance regarding streetlights, service upgrades, and mark-out requests. The Water Department was also involved in the KRE project. There was a broken fire hydrant onsite. I have no other details, but it's been replaced. And they also assisted with water pressure testing at that project. There were a number of requests, actually 51, for locating and marking underground utilities, to two outside registers, there was a demo of water shut-off and meter pull, and the department attended safety classes. By the way, for those of you who don't know, the Water Department is three people. So, when I read this list, every meeting, and go on and on about the various things they've done, it's three people working. Thank you.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 2017 retail food establishment and pet license renewals are ongoing, and late fees are now being incurred and applied, so if you haven't gotten your license, please get one. Public Health Nursing Supervisor reports that the state is experiencing high levels of flu incidences, and we are monitoring Madison occurrences. The health officer has met with the Administrator and Director of the YMCA regarding a grant application and the Health Department's involvement going forward. And finally, a part-time inspector has begun conducting retail food inspections to assist inspection states. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Madison Senior Center, the AARP BIDA Tax Assistance Program began its 2017 season here on February 1st, and will continue to meet with clients on Wednesdays through April 12th by appointment. New this year is a program called Tax Layer, which the volunteers are trained and tested on prior to the start of the season. As the program is new, there is no carryover from prior years, so all data must be re-entered, requiring two-hour time slots to ensure accuracy. And that means you need to bring your information from last year's tax returns with you when you come to do your tax returns. Both federal and state tax returns are filed, and Madison again has seven tax preparers and two supervisors. The Trytown 55-plus Go-Go Grandparents Transportation Project, funded by a grant from the Grotta Fund for Senior Care, is expected to begin a trial period of service in late March. The cost per trip, time limitations, and other factors are under review. Other areas- Other area grantees will be observing the progress for potential utilization by their senior populations. In addition to transportation, Madison and the Chatums are collaborating on revisiting the age-friendly business concept begun by the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee in two thousand and six. Informational materials are being designed for distribution in the three communities in partnership with the Downtown Development Corporation and the Madison Chamber of Commerce. And from the Downtown Development Commission, they are at, busy at work putting together, uh, what I think is the seventeenth iteration of the Taste of Madison, which will be held on March twentieth, Monday night, at the Park Avenue Club. Tickets are available on the Gary's website, or on the I Love Madison website, which will take you to the Gary's website. It's, uh, sixty-five dollars for general admission, which is, uh, admission at seven PM, and VIP tickets, which are one hundred dollars at admission, is at six PM. Um, from Recreation, um, despite all of that snow we had the other day, Recreation is getting ready for the spring and summer season. They anticipate that the fields will begin to be in use the first week of March. Nineteen groups will be using fourteen fields. Um, Recreation is also hosting several returning programs: the Building Blocks Lacrosse, Morris Elite Soccer, Morris Rugby, Total Dutch Field Hockey, U.S. Sports Institute, uh, Pauventis Soccer, and several others. The Ski Club, which, like the snow, makes its final trip to Mount Peter this Friday, February seventeenth. Enrollment this year was two hundred with twenty-five volunteers. Background Check System is a continued success, with approximately four hundred volunteers going through the system. You can sign up for Recreation's calendar and email alerts, uh, on RoseNet. The, you can get it either text or email. And from the Community Gardens, uh, the Community Gardens, uh, is planning for the spring, summer, and fall season. They would like to plant a pollinator garden at the MRC. I will be coming with more information on that. A pollinator, uh, garden attracts bees and butterflies, which then in turn turn around and pollinate all of, uh, the vegetables and flowers growing in the community garden. And as we know, there is a crisis with bees at this point, so anything we can do to support the population, um, would be, would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications and Petitions.
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council received several, uh, communications this week. A letter received January the twenty-seventh from Steve Stocker of Park Avenue regarding the Borough website. A letter received January twenty-seventh from Bob Jennings of Albright Circle regarding the Board of Education and Hartley Dodge Memorial Space. An email from, uh, received February fifth from, uh, resident Dave Carver of Bellew Avenue regarding a recently adopted welcoming community resolution. An email received February ninth from, um, Mayor Nicholas Platt of Harding Township supporting the adoption of Resolution Fifty-seven, two thousand and seventeen. An email received February tenth from Gordon Lewis of Glenwell Circle opposing the adoption of Resolution Fifty-seven, two thousand and seventeen. And a letter received today, uh, February the thirteenth from Frank Manchurri of Locust Street regarding the two-hour parking in the areas surrounding Dodge Field.
Thank you. All right, now we're on to first of several invitations for discussion. Please listen carefully, because I'm gonna change up the rules a little bit today. We're gonna do three invitations for discussion. We'll have one right after the, uh, budget discussion, so anyone that wants to comment on the budget discussions today will get a chance after the, the, uh, agenda discussion. So hold off any questions on that. And number two rule here is a bleacher proposal is an ordinance that is up for hearing, so if you want to comment on that, there'll be a presentation coming up shortly, but comments will be restricted to the hearing. So, what you can comment on right now are the appropriation of a hundred and forty-thousand dollars for restoration repair of the James Library. The, uh, there'll be, uh, a presentation from Seal Power on energy audit, just added to the agenda, and you also may comment on any of the resolutions that are listed. Later on in the meeting, there'll be an opportunity to comment on anything. So right now, if you're wishing to comment on those agenda discussion items or any resolution, please step to the lectern, state your name, your address, and the agenda item you're commenting on, and please hold your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard?
Tom Harlan-Puddus, Twenty-Seventh Palmroy Road. Nice to see you all here. Uh, I just want to comment on the bleacher resolution.
And actually, that, that's, that has a hearing, so, I was gonna say to hold off, but go, go ahead, you're there.
That the last time you talked about the Hartley Dodge. Real quick, I just want to say something supportive about it.
Sounds good.
I just, I'm just glad to see that we were able to collaborate with the Recreation Groups and raise some money, and that the Borough also was able to come up with the funds. Finally, you know, there's been a lot of pressure from the community, anxiety about having uh, the facility improved with some good seating for all the spectators that are there. And, um, hopefully, we can also work on the bleachers for MRC Two, because there's, there are some sports groups that don't use MRC One, so they won't be able to benefit from the seating that we're putting over at MRC One. So we want to make sure that, and all the groups did contribute the money to, towards the ten percent. So please keep that in mind, and, uh, I'll keep reminding us, our committee at the Recreation Activity Meetings. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Welcome, Rob.
My name's Rob Catalonella. I live at Woodland Road, on Woodland Road in Madison, New Jersey. Uh, I apologize if I'm a little flighty. I've, I've been in Asia for a while, and, uh, you think the coverage of Trump is crazy here. Go to Singapore and Hong Kong. Um, as it pertains to the money, the hundred and forty thousand dollars for the, uh, library, for the James Building, when last, uh, they presented to us, they mentioned that they hadn't spent all of the money for the previous year, and they were going to give some back. Has the group given any money back?
Eighty, eighty thousand has come back in, so that's...
Great. So then, they also said that they hadn't, at the time, uh, really come up with, that the major repairs to control the water ingress, I think, I believe it's ingress, not egress, into the building had been completed, and they had no specific plans in mind for this year. Have they, do they now have plans that require the, uh, hundred and forty grand?
We'll cover, we'll make sure we cover that during the presentation coming up.
So, well, so they, well, I mean, the que, my question is, if they don't have, and it's kind of odd that I have to ask a question before, it's like Jeopardy!, so I'll ask the question. Uh, you can just give me the answer later. Um, uh, i- if they don't have anything planned embedded, why would we give a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Okay, so we'll make sure we cover that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else wishing to comment on any of the agenda items?
Wanted to talk about one of the ordinances on parking. Is this the time to...
Uh, there'll, there'll be a hearing for that, so when, when we call up that ordinance for hearing, you'll be able to comment on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, appreciate your patience. Anyone else seeing none? We close this part of the meeting, and we go to the Seal Power Presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. It sounds like we have a very busy agenda, so I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. My name is Scott Fisher. I'm one of the co-founders of a company called Seal Power. We provide home energy assessments, and we're part of a, of a program called the New Jersey Home Performance with Energy Star Program. We're a participating provider of that program. Um, our co, we were recently just awarded the, um, this, to become the sponsor of this, of this really neat program that provides reduced-priced home energy assessments to anybody that owns a home in Madison. So what it does is it, um, it's the first step for most people towards, towards participating in the, in the center program that's very little known, called the New Jersey Home Performance with Energy Star Program. We've done this program in several other communities, as far north as Glen Rock, as far south as Princeton, um, most recently in Summit here, one of the adjoining municipalities, and also in Milburn, New Jersey. So those are, we've, we have, we've run, we've had a number of different communities participate in this type of program. It's been very successful, and we're very excited to launch this program here in Madison, because the housing stock is ideal for this type of, of work. What it does is it provides incentives to up, to install upgrades, um, and everything from insulation, heating equipment, air conditioning equipment. Uh, there's cash back and financing incentives that are offered by the New Jersey Clean Energy Program to help people pay for installing these, these different improvements to their home. But most people don't know that this program's out there, so I think this could really go a long way here in Madison, and we're very excited to kick it off. Little bit about our company. We are a participating provider of the New Jersey Home Performance Program. We're a sustainable registered business ourselves. We recently won the Energy Star Century Club Award for the production that we did through the New Jersey Home Performance Program, and we're what's called a BPI Gold Star Contractor, which means we follow a set of principles that were established based on building science, uh, that we, that dictate how we perform an energy assessment, and it dictates how we install the work that we do. A little bit of background on the New Jersey, on the Home Performance with Energy Star Program on a national level. New Jersey has its version of this, but it's actually New Jersey's version of a national program that's sponsored by the Board, by the Department of Energy and the Environmental Protection Agency. The Board of Public Utilities here in New Jersey is who offers this program locally, and nearly three hundred and thirty thousand people have participated in this program nationwide. The incentives that are offered through this program are significant. It's potentially up to nineteen thousand dollars' worth of cash back and financing incentives that are available, again, to anybody that owns a home here in New Jersey, particularly in Madison, to make efficiency upgrades to their home. Those upgrades include air sealing throughout the house, adding insulation, upgrading heating equipment, upgrading cooling equipment, and hot water equipment. The incentives are offered based upon the projected energy savings of the improvements that are going to be installed. So the more that we can save a homeowner, the greater the incentives that the homeowner will receive for installing these types of upgrades. As you can see, they range from two, three, or four thousand dollars cash back, and up to five, ten, or even fifteen thousand dollars' worth of financing. It's either zero interest or low interest, depending on the financing option that's chosen by the customer. What can be, uh, what types of products can be, um, can you receive rebates for? The remediation of any health and safety issues, including mold, asbestos, knob and tube wiring, um, any sort of ventilation issue that exists within the home, chimney liners, there's a host of different, um, health and safety hazardous, uh, situations that homeowners can take up to two thousand dollars' worth of incentive money and apply towards. Upgrading existing insulation, so exterior wall insulation, attic insulation, basement insulation, heating equipment, air conditioning, and hot water. For most people that have a home energy assessment performed here in New Jersey, the reason that they do it is because it's the first step towards participating in this Home Performance with Energy Star Program. The first step towards, it's a three-step process. When you undergo a home energy assessment, we send a technician out, they spend about two and a half or three hours in the house, they collect about eight pages' worth of data about the home. We bring that data back to the office, where we have engineers that enter that information into some software that's provided to us by the Energy Star Program. And then from there, we have a follow-up consultation with the homeowner to let them know, um, how their house fared through this process, what the recommendations are for upgrades, how much incentive money is available to them to do this, and what the pricing of installing these retrofits is through our firm, should they decide to have us do that. We focus on several different things: safety, efficiency, and, uh, to get there, we use a series of different diagnostic tests that are designed to help us uncover exactly how leaky the house is relative to where it should be, exactly what the insulation levels are currently relative to what they should be, and exactly what the efficiency of the different systems in the home are relative to what the recommended levels are. For homeowners that decide to participate in this program, they can simply go online, schedule an assessment, we'll come out, send a technician to their home, conduct a follow-up appointment, and if they'd like us to install the work, we'll do that for them as well. We'll process any of the related paperwork submitted to the New Jersey Clean Energy Program and help them get their rebates and incentives. For anybody interested in participating in this, they can simply go to our website, forward slash Madison, sign up, uh, they can see all of our availability online, and we look forward to, uh, working with lots of people here. Does anybody have any questions? All righty. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Great program. All right, Bleacher Presentation, Zach. And again, this, uh, ordinance is up for hearing tonight, and as requested, the last one, there was not a full understanding of, uh, what the project entailed, so this is the background.
All right, thank you all for your time. This should be exceptionally brief. I just hope to give a quick outline of the bleacher project that we've been working on for the past two years now, and hopefully address any outstanding questions, uh, that may remain. Tom gave me a bit of a lead-in. Tom gave me a bit of a lead-in, so appreciate that. All right, just quick background. About two years ago, the Recreation Advisory Committee identified bleacher seating at the Arm, at the, uh, MRC as their number-one need. Um, if anybody's been up there recently, they know that the seating, uh, situation is less than ideal. We've been, um, trying to accommodate people with cobbled-together, uh, portable units, uh, scattered around the complex. Uh, there are a number of problems with that. Uh, number one, it's not entirely safe. Number two, it's not ADA accessible, and, uh, it's, it's pretty limited as far as scope goes. So after two years of deliberating and meeting with various vendors, uh, we settled on this project as the best way to accommodate all, um, all the various programs' needs in a time-efficient and hopefully cost-efficient fashion. So what we have is a two-hundred-and-fifty-seat grandstand built into the MRC One hillside. Uh, the structure includes an eight-by-eighteen, uh, press box with an additional filming and viewing area on top. Um, another issue that we wanted to address up at the MRC is, uh, there is a need for a press box, and we've been using a temporary structure, um, that is also less than ideal. Uh, the main seating area of this project would span approximately eighty feet, uh, in width. It would go from about the thirty-five-yard line on one side of MRC One to the thirty-five-yard line on the other side. And, uh, it has about six risers going from, uh, front to back. Again, it's ADA accessible, and then we want to address MRC Two seating with a, about a one-hundred-seat portable unit, um, which would be, uh, separate from this project, uh, via any number of alternative funding sources. This is just a schematic of what the, uh, what the unit would look like. Again, it's about eighty feet wide, six risers, and then, uh, on the top would be an eight-by-eighteen press box with a filming and viewing area on top of that. That's just a side view. Again, it shows six risers, five treads. There's a representation of the, uh, press box up at the top. This is just for context, um, it's the closest approximation of, uh, in terms of concept. Uh, in, in terms of scope, it's, it's really not comparable. Uh, this unit is over at the Florham Park Elm Street complex, and it's about thirty feet wide, and again, our unit would be about eighty feet wide. This probably seats about an estimated one hundred. Ours seats about an estimated two-hundred-and-fifty. That press box, however, is pretty comparable in scope, about eight-by-eighteen. Any questions?
Questions from... Thank you.
Thank you.
Much better understanding for... Okay, um, item, next item is appropriation of a hundred and forty thousand dollars for restoration repair of the James Library Building. Ben?
Yes, uh, very quickly, I just wanted to add one detail, which is that...
Yes, very quickly, I just wanted to add one detail, which is that the Open Space Committee allocated $274,000 for this project. Of that, $27,500 was a contribution made by several teams that use that field. So as Tom Harland Puthus indicated earlier, it's a good example of cooperation and we look forward to seeing the finished product. Thank you.
And as Open Space liaison, do you want to introduce the next item?
Sure. At our last meeting, we unanimously approved $140,000 grant for the restoration and repair of the James Library Building. Deb Stark is here to walk us through what that money will be spent for, or spent on, should I say.
Thanks. But first, I wanted to just make one clarification. I don't recall saying last, last year that we didn't have a plan. This is the plan. This plan has been in existence since 2012. I'm sorry, I've lost my voice. I've been on a plane for like, yesterday for like, four hours. So this next project is to do the roof, which needs to be done, and to complete the moisture mitigation project, which was begun last time. So as you may recall, we came for a money last, last year and the committee approved the funding. And this money is used actually as a match mostly for the Morris County Historical Preservation Trust. And we need the commitment before we can go out to the trust. So we had the commitment. We went to Morris County Historical Preservation Trust and as they did with the Hartley Dodge request, they cut everybody's funding. So we had, we requested from the county $240,000 and we got $120,000. Obviously, we did not need a full match from the borough. So we returned $80,000 to Open Space and we kept about $45,000 of that. And that's being used for the current project 3A, which was reduced in scope and was the repair of the accessible walkway and also the renovation of the finials. We took the finials down, they were cracked. So that, and they're being repaired now in California. So that is what that money is being used for. So going forward, we really would like to go to the county and say, we really want to finish this project. Want to finish most of what's in this plan, which as I said, was done in 2011, 2012. And in order to do that, we are going to need some additional money. So I'm hoping we can get enough from the county to do that. I have a couple of other funding sources that we'll use for the rest of the funding. The New Jersey Historic Trust just came out with another funding opportunity, so I am approaching that. And then this would be the balance. And the plan is to complete the roof and finish the mitigate, the moisture mitigation. Oh, thank you.
Questions? Matt?
Yeah, I didn't bring my book. So can you just remind us where we are in terms of the plan? Is this the final stage? Or is this, are there a couple more years to complete the roof? Because the roof is...
We are hoping that this is the final stage. There may be some, it depends on the county. It depends on how much money the county gives us. If the county gives us the full, you know, grant that we're seeking, then we will be finished with all of this. If not, then we may have to do a smaller part of the project and go back and do some more. It really is all dependent on how much, how much money the county gives.
So ballpark, how much is left? What's, what's the cost of what's remaining to do, to be done?
The cost of what's remaining to do, so originally, we gave you back in 2012, I guess, an estimate of about $1.7 million for the entire project. And that was what was outlined in here. And costs obviously shift a bit. And so we are, we actually have raised one, or actually, the project has cost about just over a million dollars so far. And of that million dollars, we have gotten funding for about $800,000 of that. And I think it's about $200,000 of that came from just the Borough of Madison. So the rest of it came from other sources. $280,000.
That seems low because...
No, $280,000, $280,000 came from the Borough of Madison.
Okay, that seems more like it. I was gonna say $200 seem low. So you're, but you're saying there's still about $700,000 worth of work left to do?
Approximately, approximately.
You're hopeful that with the 140 we give you, plus the money from the county, plus other sources, you'll be able to get all of that done?
I hope. I can't, I cannot say that that's going to be everything. Believe me, I would love nothing more than to finish this project. It is really not a lot of fun. So I'm hoping that that's the, that that's the answer. There may be something else to do. It depends on, you know, it depends on what they find. As you know, anytime you have a construction project, you know, this is what it looks like. And then they go in and there's a little bit else. But we are, if this is not the last year, the year following will be a very minimal project.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, so this is ordinance eight that is listed for introduction. Now on to our budget discussions, which will be starting off capital and leading into department heads. And so for, we'll get to meet a few department heads for the first time. So this is a special night. And for those that are new and coming back, a reminder, you've been given a guideline as to how long your presentation should be. And for every minute you go over, we cut your budget by 10%.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. This is the schedule of presenters that we have this evening. As mentioned at the last budget hearing, I think one of the main focuses council should look at is the five-year capital plan, specifically years 2000, whoops, I pressed the wrong button. Years 2017 and 18 and 19, where we're well over what we think we can afford. At the last council meeting, I said, I think we're more in the $4.2 million range. So keep that in mind when you have conversations with each of the department heads that are here. Some of them have capital, some of them don't. The ones that don't, they'll, they'll be quite quick. And I also did give you a copy of the five-year capital plan, just in totality. Anyone that's interested in any of this documentation, it's on Rosenet. Go into the, under the Finance Department, under the Annual Budget Process. And with that, I want to invite Lou DeRosa to come on up.
Jim said we each have an hour to speak, so if we go over that one. Okay, good evening. We will keep it brief. Just to remind everyone, we are a combination of fire department, so I'm in charge of both career and volunteer staff. In 2017, we're celebrating our 136th anniversary. My present staffing levels are, I have 36 total personnel, consisting of 14 career, 15 total volunteers, 10 suppression members in the volunteer group, which mean they're able to do fire suppression work, we're SCBA, and five support members. And then I have seven inactive or life members, which are mostly our older gentlemen that still contribute to the group, but don't do any firefighting anymore. The two pictures that you see up there, real quick, the older one is from our 50th anniversary celebration back in 1931. And the other one with all our backs to you, kind of symbolizes that we're one group. You can't tell which one of us are volunteers or, or career. When we go to a fire scene, we act as one unit and work together. Just to review what our fire department does, in addition to fighting fires, last year, our Fire Prevention Bureau conducted 585 commercial inspections, 70 safe housing inspections, 308 resale or re-rental...
Slide.
Oops, sorry.
There you go.
Inspections. We visited and met with 20, about 2,200 schoolchildren, talking fire safety programs with them, met with 400 preschool childrens, met with about 100 seniors, conducted approximately 916 subcode inspections. Now, subcode inspections are related directly to new construction and renovation. And Bruce Barrios is our subcode official, along with James Blair, who does inspections. And then I'll pinch-hit every now and then, too. But we work under Russ Brown in the Building Department. So that's why you see 567 inspections were done in Madison and 349 inspections were done in Chatham. And then EMT calls, we're going to talk about that in a minute. Our activity over the past seven years, starting in 2010 to 2016, without going to all the numbers, but our call volume has significantly increased from 2010 to 2016, both on the fireside and also on the EMS side as well. And those are just a couple of our photographs from some of our incidents over recent years. Some of our accomplishments from 2016, brought in one new volunteer, but I actually, the number's not six, I actually lost five volunteers, either through age or just moved out of town or had other commitments and couldn't keep up with ours. We were able to promote four lieutenants in the career division. We did do some live burn training at the Morris County Fire Academy and the new fire burn simulator. And we are going back there again this year to do some good hands-on training. We did complete all our mandated testing and, and training requirements. We conducted 24 drills within our department, did two live burn sessions, like I said, at the Fire Academy. And all our equipment maintenance was annually inspected and completed. We completed all of our capital projects, with the exception of one, which should be completed this spring, which had involved some radio repair work that's being done for the Midwood Water Tower. On the topic of capital improvement projects, back in 2011, I presented a proposal to the mayor and council to migrate from Verizon's wires to our in-house network, our fiber backbone network, our radio controls. Back then, the mayor and council invested $67,000 in that project. I'm happy to say that we turned the corner and we're living free now off of our fiber investment back in 2011. The savings of about $11,000 to $12,000 a year that we were paying Verizon has now paid for that project. And now we're just, we're living off of what we own, which is our own fiber network. So that project, I'm happy to say, is really complete. And we were able to update our fire department rules and regulations in 2016. In 2017, moving forward, some of our goals, again, mandated training and equipment maintenance and testing, we're going to continue along with that. Again, keep going back to the Morris County Fire Academy, hopefully try and promote one volunteer to the rank of battalion chief. The next one, attract and retain more volunteers. That's been an ongoing work in progress. And every organization, including the ambulance squad and all the other organizations in town are feeling that pinch. Nobody seems to want to volunteer. And in our organization, not only have to volunteer, but you have to risk your life. So it, it kind of weighs a lot more. But we're always constantly trying to retain and attract more volunteers. We want to review and update all our SOGs, bring them up to line, up in line, continue to keep morale high, apply our relevant grants. Specifically, we're going to be applying for a grant to replace our 1990 engine in 2018, next year. Continue working on the specs for that engine. And we're also striving to improve our ISO rating to go back to a Class III town from a Class IV town, which we presently are. Fired, from a budget perspective, my operating budget, other than salaries, is staying flat for the calendar year 2018. There's no increases in my operational portion of my budget to salaries, which are contractual increases, that's going up. My maintenance vehicle portion of my budget, I've asked for a $4,000 increase in each one of, $2,000 in each line item for a total of $4,000. My fleet is getting older. I don't have any warranties except on two of the smaller staff vehicles right now, but the fire trucks, the engines, the ladder truck, the rescue, there's no warranty. So everything is, is out of pocket cost. And there's nothing cheap on a fire truck. If you think owning a boat costs a lot of money, we own a fire truck and five of them. There's nothing cheap. Public Safety Complex, I've asked for approximately $10,000 increase in that line item for this year. We've been in that building now almost 10 years and things are starting to wear out. There's motors, there's a whole host of HVAC things that are starting to show their age that have to be replaced and modernized. Last year, we were just about to keep even with that, but we had to cut back on things like waxing the floor and doing the windows and the stuff that keeps the place looking good. So hopefully between this $10,000, we can continue to maintain that facility in an orderly fashion. And then finally, our capital. Got a slew of small things that are going on in 2017, one of which is just, to start off with, is our turnout gear replacement. Our turnout gear lasts approximately 10 years, depending on its use and abuse. And we maintain it, we repair it the best we can. But usually after approximately 10 years, it's just not usable anymore, especially by the frontline guys. So we're constantly buying four sets every, every year and integrating it in to replace the stuff that's damaged and bad. On the next item, I have $18,000 in capital for replacement of a fire hose, particularly large diameter hose, five-inch hose, which is our supply lines. 100-foot length costs about $1,000 for a five-inch supply line. So we're going to replace some of the older ones that we have and then add to it to try and get 1,000 feet on each engine. We're going to be hopefully replacing a generator up at the Midwood Water Tower, which supplies backup emergency power to all of our radio communications. And when I say all of ours, I mean fire, police, EMS, and DPW, and also for the Water Department SCADA system that's up there as well. This gen set that's up there now is put in in '98. It's an air-cooled engine. It's kind of outlived its life right now. We've had issues with the exhaust manifold. It isn't manufactured anymore. They've had to do some intriguing repairs to it, but it's come to its end of life. So rather than wait till it dies in an emergency situation when it's running, we'll replace it under controlled methods and hopefully save a little bit of money. I want to replace some portable trash pumps, a couple of which that I have that were purchased during, we had Hurricane Floyd way back in 1990. They've been around a while. So we've repaired them the best we can, but they, they live in a water world. They, they don't last forever. So we want to replace some of those three-inch trash pumps. We want to purchase rescue stabilization struts, which are used primarily for auto extrication to stabilize a vehicle that's out on its wheels, primarily on its side or on its overturned. They can be easily deployed and also used for a couple other building stabilization scenarios that we may be faced with. Low-pressure airbags, which are used to fill voids in trench rescue operations, which is what we get involved with. They're also used to lift large objects a lot higher than the high-pressure airbags, which only go up maybe 12 or 18 inches. Low-pressure can get anything up to 24 to 36 inches, depending on the size of the bags we get. But they're to help us with our extrication and stabilization operations. Thermal imaging cameras. Finally, one of the manufacturers, which happens to be the one that we're using, Scott Aviation, has, in my opinion, a grand slam in coming out with, giving the capability of a firefighter to see in a smoke-filled environment very easily. You know, like, best way I can describe it is giving a blind person sight. Presently, we use handheld, handheld thermal imaging cameras, which work, but the problem is only the person that has it can see. When he's in a crew of three or four, he's, he's trying to direct and lead and they can't even see him half the time. And then he's trying to point and show. These cameras that we're looking at here actually get mounted and integrated into the facepieces. So once you turn them on, the individual, or all the individuals that have them turned on can physically see through the smoke, thermal images through the smoke, which will aid in, in their firefighter safety, but also go in rescue and locating and getting no fire. Great safety tool, great safety investment. And we, we beta-tested one last year at the Fire Academy, the first generation one. They've had some improvements. So by the time we're ready to make this purchase, hopefully this year, they've entered a third generation, which will be a real good success for us. So that's a big one for us, being us able to see in a smoke-filled environment. The next one is for, at the Public Safety Complex, to replace the snow guards that are on the roof, on the front side of the roof, the prospect side of the street of the roof. Two, three years ago, we had heavy snows. It knocked the ones off the back. We had a big landslide. Thank God there were no cars or anybody behind the building, but it took off the gutters and it damaged the stack for the, all the heaters and also for the building's generator. So they were replaced through an insurance claim with steel rails that are bolted to the ridges on the, on the roof. The ones on the front, which were the original ones, are just silicone to the flat portions of the roof. There, I want to say probably about 70% of them have fallen off since the building was built. So rather than have another incident happen on the front, try and get in front of it, the 18,000 is to replace those silicone plastic pieces with a nice metal... the 18,000 is to replace those silicone plastic pieces with a nice metal bars, just like the back, to prevent an accident from happening or damaging anything else. The next item on the list is $41,000, which is a little high, but it'll work. We're put in for an AFG grant with the, with the federal government to apply for new radio systems, a new radio system for the fire department, or new radio equipment for the fire department, portables and mobiles, to bring this into what they call P-25 compliance. Presently, our radios, which are approximately 15 to 20 years old, don't have the ability for interoperability, meaning when I go and try and talk to somebody from Morse Town or Morse Township on the trunk system that they're on, I have to physically switch to another radio. So I have to carry two radios, as does everyone else that has to integrate, and by the same token, when they come to us, they have to switch to a second radio as well, which gets very cumbersome and very confusing on the fire ground. So the radios that we're looking for through the grant will be interoperable, allowing us to go both spectrums just by turning a channel on the, on the dial. So that's what that's for. So if we do get that 231,000 grant, it should be a 5% of that 231 to make that grant come to fruition. So we've got a good shot, based on the fact that our radios are so old, and they only give us one capability and no interoperability, so that's what we're going for. And that's for 2017, which is $179,200, which I'm asking for, for this year. Moving forward, the, the only big-ticket items that are coming up on the radar are replacing our 1990 Engine III, which is, you know, knocking on 30 years old. She still runs, we still maintain her, but again, 30 years old. When something breaks on that, it's usually down for days, if not weeks, because parts are just not readily available. It's, it's in the antique world, it's over 25 years old. So we're budgeting $225,000 each year, so we can purchase her in 2020, and I don't want to push that any further than 2020. That would really start to hamper us, because our next newest engine is a 1998 beyond that. We are going to put in for a fire grant next year to apply for that, and we'll see where that takes us if we get that awarded in 2018, which will apply for that this year in the fall of '17. We'll see where that takes us, and if we get it, then we don't have to worry about budgeting in 19 and 20, and the same thing with the rescue truck moving forward too. And the rescue truck will be over 25 years old when she's replaced as well. So nothing lasts forever. We keep them looking good and well-maintained, but they don't last forever, and parts are harder and harder to get. So with that, that's it, I'm done. Any, any questions?
Question for Chief. Matt, does he have any money left?
Yeah, I'm looking at your call stats, and could you describe a little bit more, you're showing EMS Code 4 and EMS Driver, which I guess you've been doing for the last five years, and there's a footnote here that says EMS Assist is for Monday to Friday, 8 to 4:30, all medical calls you roll on?
What, what that essentially is, is saying is, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, we roll with the ambulance squad on virtually every call.
Is that necessary?
Yeah, pretty much. What's happened with the ambulance squad, weekdays, Monday through Friday, is one of their weaker points, they don't have as many volunteers around, as neither do we in the fire department from a volunteer perspective, and even the age of that volunteer in the ambulance squad is, is, it's up there, the ones that do come, you know, Jack Lutz, it's admirable what they do, but, you know, I'm, I'm getting there old too, I'm 58, I can't do what I did when I was 28, that's for sure. So, so we assist with them. We'll also work with them on secondary and tertiary calls too, on the days. There's many a times when that first call comes in, we get there, they have a crew, and they've taken care of the patient, bam, the second one comes in. We'll go there and stabilize, they may not have enough manpower to muster a second crew, but it'll go mutually to Florham Park or Chatham or Morse Township or Chatham Township, but by the time that other ambulance gets there, which could be 15, 20 minutes, they're getting patient care, and that's what's happening on that. When it comes to the EMS driver, there are some times on the weekdays and weekends and weeknights when the ambulance squad doesn't have but one person, or it's a second call and they only can get one person to show up. So rather than wait 15 or 20 minutes for another ambulance to get here, one of my guys will drive and drop in the rig, they've all been trained to drive the ambulance, and they'll drive that rig to the, to the hospital.
Do you, do you roll your, all your, what equipment do you roll when you have to go out to do this?
To the EMS calls? During the daytime, we'll primarily roll Truck Eight, which is one of our utility vehicles. Nights and weekends, it's going to be an engine, because it's the only piece of equipment that's available there for them.
Okay. Do we expect that this is going to stay at this level, or is it going to have to increase over time?
Well, you, you can see by the numbers, they're, they continue to climb from a yearly basis, there's, you know, maybe an up or down, but they're, they're constantly going up. Our volunteer situation in the fire department isn't getting better real fast, and I don't think in the ambulance squad it's getting better real fast either.
Have you guys sat down and talked about what the next three to five years are going to look like? I mean, is, is your need going to increase? Do we have to start to think about manpower on your side to cover?
It's, it's a conversation that should take place. It has not as of, in the past year or two.
Okay. And we also, in the past, well, I take that back, I don't know if we've ever discussed here, I know people have discussed, you know, if we're going to be rolling paid people to do this work, we may have the ability to recoup some of the, our costs through people's insurance. Have we started to take a harder look at that? I mean, your budget's a million and a half dollars, if 40% of your calls are covering this, you know, and it's going to increase, we probably need to find another source of revenue to cover those types of expenses that are going to increase over time.
I, I have looked at that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And so, so, and Mr. Cody, he's aware of it too.
We, we need to work with the volunteers.
Okay. Well, I mean, we, you know, one of our, our first and most important responsibilities is health and safety of our residents, and if, if we're going to need to continue to expand sort of a paid, or a paid and volunteer service, I think... I think that's my cue to stop.
It's the post of Geraldine Dunne.
That's all, thank you, Mr. Ray.
Any other questions?
To, to that end, we, we are aware of it, there are other municipalities that, that have models that do things like that. We, as our society, are required to have, all have health insurance now, and it is a part of that program, so it's, it's funding that's available. And the departments that do do it, Cedar Knolls will be one that comes to mind, they've kind of molded it and shaped it where they do an initial billing, but they don't collect from their residents, just because they don't want to. Those are the type of structures that can happen with that, but you can recoup pretty good funding from it.
I don't think we can do it this year, or if we did it this year, it would obviously not generate any significant revenue, because it'd take a while, but I'd ask Ray if we could start to take a look at it, so that by next budget year, we either have something in place, or we can at least discuss it.
Anything that we entertain, we'd obviously, would have to do with the volunteers, because they're the lifeblood of this service. I don't know, how many years, 50 years? So I'll defer to Bob, Councilman Landergan, who's been an instrumental leader in the ambulance squad.
I mean, we've talked internally about billing. The downside to it is this, our budget annually, and we're, we're not paid, so just for maintenance, we have about a $250,000 a year budget, which is all done through donations. If we started billing, those donations would probably go down, and there's a backend cost that you're not realizing. We'll talk about it more, but at this point, we seem to be working very well with the fire department. I can't go into a lot of details about what we're doing on the squad, I'm not allowed to at this point, but we are actively recruiting many more volunteers to the local universities.
Yeah, I mean, I think our experience in general is it's getting more challenging to find people, especially during the day, who are available, and so I think, you know, we may end up with some sort of split model where you have volunteers covering the out-of-daytime hours, but I think during the day, it's going to be getting, it's getting harder and harder to find people for the fire department. I assume you're pulling from kind of the same population from an age perspective.
The, the whole thing, the relationship kind of started in 2010 out of that, that need, when, when we hear the ambulance go out, and, you know, we'd be there in the firehouse saying, God, we're, we're here, we could do something, and we sat down and talked then, and, and that's how it kind of started, and it, it does work very well. The citizens of Madison don't care who shows up, to be honest with you, long someone that knows what they're doing does and takes good care of them, and together, we work seamlessly, and, and like I tell the ambulance squad, we work for them all the time in this aspect here, so.
Thank you.
So on the capital side, as our CFOs said, we have a half a million-dollar challenge, not to get you nervous, it doesn't look like we can do much. Your, your total budget at 180, your biggest item is actually a matching grant, so you wouldn't, we wouldn't want to mess with that, and I think in the coming years, the biggest thing is to try to get that grant for the, for the trucks, because obviously when we jump up, especially in 2020 to a half a million, that's, that'll be a challenge.
But, but those are necessities, so to speak. You can't do the job without it, and without having good dependable, reliable equipment, where it just doesn't work.
So I think just, just keep pursuing the grants.
We definitely will.
All right. All right. Mic, microphone. Okay, is that it for Lou?
Yep, I think Lou, Lou, you can...
I'm done.
Thank you, Chief.
Darren Datchison?
Yep, so our police chief, Darren, accredited.
Still accredited.
Yes, it's all first of honor. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for this opportunity in presenting my 2017 police budget. As you know, Madison Police, we are responsible for keeping the peace, protecting life and property within the borough of Madison, and we've been doing so proudly since 1890. The police department is comprised of mainly three distinct divisions. The first being the patrol division. These are the officers that are on patrol, these are the officers that, when you call 911, they're there to assist. They patrol 24/7, around the clock. The next division is our investigative division, which is comprised of four detectives. These detectives do everything, follow-up on crimes, juvenile incidents, evidence, and a myriad of other responsibilities that we have. The last is the support services, which pretty much encompasses everything else, that being traffic, training, equipment, records, communications, and purchasing. The police department is currently comprised of 28 sworn officers with total personnel of 83. Within that 83 is non-sworn, part-time, and also volunteers. This next slide is our table of organization. It pretty much establishes a line of authority from the chief on down. It also shows the span of control for each supervisor within our agency. The next couple slides are non-inclusive, but I, I wanted to show you some of the more interesting stats that we have. Calls for service are actually down 1.8% in 2016 from our previous year. We had two life saves in 2016, one being a CPR save and then a second being a Narcan save. Disorderly conduct is up 42%. Motor vehicle stops is up 7%, and municipal ordinance violations is up 99%. Arrests for 2016 are also up 15% from the, from the previous year. One stat that I want to draw your attention to is aggravated assault on police officers. In 2015, we had one assault on our personnel. 2016, we had nine. This is a rather disturbing number, our job is not getting any easier. I still have one officer that is on light duty over a year now, due to his severely broken leg on a fight call. I also want to draw your attention to our overtime. I'm very proud of the fact that we were able to reduce overtime 105,000. So for $105,000 savings from 2015 to 2016, this savings is mainly due to the fact that we instituted the corporal position. This not only saves an overtime in supervisory capacity, but it's also developing younger officers for leadership roles for the future of our agency, for when fossils like me retire. So we have to, we have to build those younger officers, and that's, that's an imperative part of training these younger, younger officers. The last two lines that I would like to draw your attention to is firearms investigations. We had a 79% increase in 2016. I, I feel this has, is a direct correlation to the political atmosphere in the elections, so people tend to get nervous when they think that your guns are going to be taken away, and it actually has an increased effect on firearms investigations. And I know we had previously discussed Open Public Records Act. In 2016, that was a 109% increase for my personnel.
Chief, can I ask you one question about that? You're not going to be wearing body cameras, and you also have cameras in your car. What is the rule, what are the rules for Oprah requests on those recordings?
There's very strict rules of what we can release and what we can't.
Okay, so, but you still get...
We have a policy that's been formulated, yes, it's still a work in progress.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're definitely, very strict guidelines.
Okay, so you'll get the requests, but most of them you can't fulfill?
Most of them we're going to deny.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, if we go on a medical call, we're not going to release, release footage of someone, you know, in need, inside of her house, things of that nature. This next slide just shows some of our community outreach programs. I'm not going to go into detail of all of them, but I would like to highlight a few of them. Top of the list is my favorite, Toys for Tots. It's, it's remarkable to see the generosity of the Madison community. To date, we have donated more than 17,000 toys to this program. Within the last year, we donated an abundance of toys to the Coria Children's Center, and we also are going to donate a truckload in the next two weeks to the Overlook Hospital. We also participated in our annual food drive with our community partners, Realogy, Whole Foods, and Drew University. This year, we donated just under 3,000 pounds of food. We also instituted a child ID program, which we rolled out on our first responder day. This program was funded by drug forfeiture fundings with no impact on our budget. The last thing I want to draw your attention to, I, I wanted to thank Mr. Cody, mayor, members of the council. As I said, said earlier, policing is not getting any easier. 2016 was a rather deadly year for law enforcement. With the support of all of you, I was able to send officers to Dallas, Texas, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, Des Moines, Iowa, and Atlantic City, New Jersey, for the funerals of those officers that were murdered in the line of duty. 2016 accomplishments. First on the list, we saw earlier tonight, was the culmination of several years of work. We achieved accreditation on October 13th. I know Lieutenant Longo is very, very happy that it's over. During 2016, we also implemented the e-ticketing platform, which increases efficiency for both the patrol division, communications, as well as the court staff. I know you heard this number again, but I'm going to, I'm going to say it one more time. We reduced overtime by 105,000, which I am, I am very proud of. We created an internet safety zone for the safety of our residents. We instituted a chaplain program. As I previously stated, we, we held our first responder day, and we were able to purchase two vehicles with no impact on our budget, with the $94,490 that was added to our special duty account through contractor funding and special fees. 2017 goals. We just discussed the implementation of body-worn cameras. I think this is very important, I, I think it's, it's a thing of the future, and I think eventually, all police departments are going to be mandated to wear body cameras. This is going to increase transparency, it's going to protect our officers and the public alike. I am happy to announce, we received a grant of $20,000 for the purchase of these cameras. We're going to purchase 40, 40 cameras at $500 apiece. Although we have not chosen a vendor at this point, we are still in the testing phase, so there are still some unknowns as to what other type of hardware is going to be needed and data storage costs. So unfortunately, we don't have any concrete figures, because we don't know exactly what camera system we're going with yet. I would also like to negotiate with the Board of Education to, to help us fund a second Class II or Class III officer to, to help us for the security of, of our children. I would also like to increase our current SRO to 40 hours, which we are currently doing. He was previously on 29 hours, we're, we're looking to increase him to 40 hours, to, to fill that gap in security. I'd like to complete our pistol range project and structure. I... He was previously on 29 hours. We're looking to increase him to 40 hours to fill that gap in security. I'd like to complete our pistol range project and structure. In 2017, I would like to purchase three vehicles in that special duty account with little impact on our budget. And the last, I would like to establish an explorer post within the Madison Police Department. I think this will increase interaction between my officers and the youth of our community. It will open up the possibility of law enforcement to our younger generation, and I think it would be a great feeder program for our department from youth within our community. Police Department budget, 25,240. Most of the increases that are being seen in my 2017 budget are due to contractual obligations, salaries, wages, step increases. I am asking for certain increases, very minor in.
We went ahead about 50 slides.
Deja vu all over again.
Okay, there we go. Bad fingers. So like I said, most of the increases are due to contractual obligations, which are out of my control. I'm looking for a slight increase in maintenance of equipment. This is going to encompass the new e-ticket printers. It's an added cost that we did not have last year. We have mobile vision, which is our in-car camera system, but we have increases in that. And also, I have data conversion costs for old enforces system. We currently have six years of data in that system that we do not have access to. So that system is going to be, that data is going to be converted over into our new Asking for slight increases in medical supplies, mainly to deal with Narcan replacement, AED batteries, things of that nature. I'm also asking for a slight increase in safety supplies. This increase is due to the school guards and their equipment, which has been in need of replacement for numerous years. Before I go on to Capitol, is there any questions in reference to operating budget?
After all the presentations, there'll be a chance for public.
Okay, so for 2017, my big ticket item is the replacement of all of our handheld radios. Our current radios are 13 years old. We're experiencing frequent failures. As you can imagine, the radio is the lifeline of my officers. That could be the difference between life and death if they're calling for help and their radio's not working. The current radios that we're looking to purchase will have the ability to transmit on a 700, 800 megahertz radio frequency, which the FCC is going to require all police departments, fire departments, to migrate to in the year 2021, 2022. So this new radio will give us the ability to upgrade to those frequencies. It will also give us the ability to communicate on the county's encryption system. So it's a very versatile radio that's going to last for at least 15 years. So we're thinking in the future, whatever the FCC throws at us, this radio should give us the versatility to tackle. We were also able to get state contract pricing on these radios, as well as a 10% reduction, which is an additional $22,000 in savings if we purchase them this year. The next item is the cameras. We allocated $50,000. This was before the grant, but like I said, we don't know what additional costs are going to come with that camera system. We don't know what the data costs are going to be at this time. But we did receive a $20,000 grant for those cameras. The last item in 2017 was $65,000 for site work of our new range house. As you know, the current range house that we've been utilizing since I believe it was 1966 is going to be demolished very soon. In its footprint, the electric department is going to erect their new building. Our new building is going to sit towards the rear of the electric department building. So this $65,000 is going to incorporate all the site work, drainage, things of that Going to 2018, we're looking to get $25,000 to move our radio-controlled voter. Right now, it's currently on the DPW building, and we have dead spots when officers run Shunpike Road. There's dead spots in that area. So this $25,000 will be moving that voter from the DPW to the Midwood Water Tower, which will give us complete coverage on the Shunpike Road area. Once again, in 2018, $100,000 for our new range house. I think that this is going to be reduced. We are actually funding part of this project through the Peter Esposito funds that we received several years ago. The $100,000 is a rough estimate for what we're going to need. I'm also asking for $75,000 for the replacement of our ESU truck. ESU was basically our SWAT operations. This truck is a 1990. We've been limping it along for several years. It's pretty much on its last leg. And the next big ticket item is the first installment of $100,000 for our desk replacement. This is going to be spread out over several years to have less of an impact. If you remember, last year and the year before, we were actually allocating $250,000 a year for this desk replacement. But thankfully, the state, which was previously mandating us for the next generation 911, which is a system that requires 911 PSAPs to be able to receive text messaging, video, and phone, we're not required to any longer. So that drastically reduced our desk costs. Each county is going to have one next generation 911 at the county level. They will transfer any calls that come to them through our CAD system. 2019, I'm looking for $20,000 for replacement of our radar units, which were originally purchased in 2005, our second installment of our dispatch equipment. The same with 2020, with that last of $100,000. I'm also looking for $50,000 to erect a parking roof over our vehicles. I know this seems like a high cost, but our police vehicles have very sensitive equipment, computers, cameras, scanners, camera equipment. Frequently in the summertime, due to the extensive heat in the vehicles, it's killing our electronic equipment. So what this roof will do is it'll shade the vehicles that are not in use, saving those electronics. On the flip side, in the wintertime, storms like the other day, we have to pull all our officers off the road, clean the cars off, move them out so they can plow out. With this structure in place, we no longer have to pull officers off the road to maintain and clear our back lot. And the final year, 2021, $35,000 for a patrol vehicle, we probably will not need this at that point. And the last item is $75,000 for a parking garage. I know this is on the wish list. When we designed our building, a garage was omitted. We do have a Sally port, but we don't have room for things like our motorcycles, which are currently housed in our Sally port, and they shouldn't be. Barricades, cones, things of that nature. So that's what that parking garage would encompass. And that's pretty much it.
Where would that garage go?
Along King's Road, just would make our building a little bit longer, so it would be.
Would it take up any parking spaces?
It would take up probably three or four parking spaces. Not in the commuter lot.
Not in your.
In our lot.
In your lot.
Yes.
So the, into our CFO's issue, you've got it, over the five years, probably a reasonable $200,000 average, but we're front-end loaded. Is there anything that can be done to spread that more evenly to?
If we split up our $200,000, like what we have previously discussed, we are going to lose that additional $22,000 in savings that we negotiated with Motorola.
I'm not worried about this year, Chief. I'm more worried about 2018 and 19. So just in general, that's a message to council.
All right.
So when you talked about reducing the range house, one question, Chief. You talk about three vehicles coming through the.
Special duty fund.
The special duty fund, and then you have a vehicle in the budget for $50,000, and then you have a vehicle in 2018. So maybe we can look at, you know, how many vehicles you need over the next few years. Joe's nodding his head, so I'll talk to Joe about it.
Yeah, that should be fine. With the purchase of the vehicles this year, it's kind of getting us back on track for replacement. Our vehicle replacement was kind of lacking in the past several years, which drove mileage up and repair costs. So I think with the purchase of these vehicles this year, it's going to put us more on track where we possibly split the costs of that ESU vehicle next year.
When does the last Crown Vic retire?
It's going to be probably this year. And that's going to actually save costs too, because.
We'll have to have a ceremony for that.
Yeah, in the past several years, when we go from a Crown Vic to the new SUV, obviously the equipment doesn't fit in both cars. We have to purchase new equipment for those vehicles. But now, since we have all SUVs, when we replace vehicles from this point forward, we could just swap into the new car with less cost.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And now, for first time, our health officer, Michael Fitzpatrick.
Since Mike is new, I, we talked about him not, you know, being pretty brief, so I think I'll just talk a little bit about what the Health Department does and some goals for 2017, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I haven't met everyone, but thank you for letting me present a budget and information on the Health Department. The question is, what does the Health Department do? We do our job well, you probably never hear of us, and that's one of the problems and one of the dilemmas you have, A, in a small department, and one that's not quite as interesting as fire and police, frankly. We're kind of a quiet department, and we just need to go about our business. And as an example, in food establishments, if you're doing your job properly, and the food establishments are generally satisfactory, you don't hear of any foodborne illnesses or things like that. That's kind of a specific example. But the question is, what does the Health Department do? We really need to assess the needs of the community, and once you decide, once you assess the health needs of the community, you then try to make a judgment on how you can implement an improvement plan. It's called a CHIP, a Community Health Improvement Plan, and you do that through the 10 essential public health services through population health. That's defined by the State Department of Health. And I've given a few examples here. So food inspection and environmental inspections, and following up on environmental complaints would be one. Vaccinations, that's foundational. You know, 50, 60 years ago, weren't very many vaccines available, and children had polio and other childhood diseases. So again, that becomes very foundational, and because you have all these vaccinations going on and immunizations, there's not really a lot of talk about childhood diseases to a great extent. So again, that's kind of a silent way that the community is protected through population health. If people were protected just in Madison, that would be very useful potentially for Madison residents, but public health has to be this larger, broader population base where the majority of individuals are protected, again, through vaccinations, through better health care, and therefore collectively and aggregately, the general population stays healthier. Rabies control is something that's very basic. There has not been a case of rabies in New Jersey in a domestic dog for something like 40 years, except for one case from one serviceman who brought a dog back from Afghanistan about three, four years ago, and it went through the system, and unfortunately, the dog had rabies. But other than that, because of the really quality vaccination programs, which happened in each and every community every year, you end up having basically a zero level of rabies. When an individual contracts rabies, the choice is, if you don't get any immunizations, the choice is death. There's no option. That's it. So it's a really inexpensive program, partially subsidized by the state, and then the rest of it is the labor on our part to put the clinic in place. Infectious disease, we monitor that through the CDRSS system, which is a state system. They may, the state may call us. Physicians, hospitals will put a list of communicable diseases and infectious diseases in this CDRSS system, and the local Health Department is responsible for following up and assuring that any community members or residents are actually followed and directed for possible treatment back to their doctor, and/or, more importantly, what contacts they had and who they may have been affected by, or who they may affect. School audits are another portion of this infectious disease system, where young children are required prior to going to school or while they're in school, for nursing schools, age, are required to essentially have immunizations. And we verify by regulation and law, meaning the Health Department, specifically, and nursing staff will go in and do audits in schools. And then audits are not just in preschool, but they're also in various years, during various years of the regular school students in both elementary, middle school, and in high school. And that just helps to keep up the immunity level. And you may have heard of this, it's called like herd protection or protection of the large group, and so therefore, that's the whole idea. People can have medical exemptions, and they can also have religious exemptions. By and large, most people have, their children have the appropriate immunizations. We do run chronic disease programs, I'll just throw a few names out, such as diabetes, cancer, and heart disease. I mean, so just think of all those complicated factors. And with that, we have a health education program where you try to educate people, help them become informed on how they can best reduce the risk. And there may be family risk, there may be risk because of exercise, eating habits, kind of environmental issues and things like that. So we couple the practical with the actual education and promotion through our health educator. And then the last item I have listed here is vital records, where it's really important to know where people, when people are born, were married, so you can prove and move throughout the country, throughout other countries, and actually have a valid identification of individuals. And those are completed by our registrar of vital statistics and our deputy registrar and alternate deputy registrar. And our goals for 2017 would include professionally really managing the Chatham Borough Health Service Contract, which will terminate in July. Next, to continue to stabilize relationships with the remaining contract communities of Chatham Township, Springfield, and Cranford. Cranford is, as you know, a new addition, and that seems to be going very, very well over just the short month of January. We also look to pursue some additional contract opportunities to reduce costs to the borough and subsidize the health services here in the township. You know, it's interesting that years ago, each Health Department was separate, and as you know, you have an inter-local service agreement at the present time, and you've been providing inter-local service agreements for a long time. And some of you may know this or not, but I was actually trained in Madison way back in the 70s, and I had an internship here through the State Department of Health. So I was here for a few months, and then I worked for the town of Booton for five years. The town of Booton was under the auspices of Booton. So I understood and learned your system quite well when you had your own laboratory here, and Theo Baumgartner ran the laboratory and taught us all kinds of very important things about laboratory techniques. And so I understand the depth and the breadth of the Madison Health Department, and it's my goal to pursue additional contracts and do them in a quality manner, and assure that there's a high level of professionalism through the staff and for the services that other communities may be interested in. And then lastly, as it relates especially to population health, we want to cultivate relationships and forge working partnerships with other agencies, such as Atlantic Healthcare System, Summit Medical Group, Madison YMCA. Collaboration and sharing costs and sharing visions and sharing programs are a good way to create cost-effective approach to successful public health implementation. But also, in addition to that, it really helps to create a lot of synergy amongst groups. In doing so, you can actually more effectively deliver better services. They may not be less expensive, but they may be much deeper and much more useful. So it may not be cheaper to do that, but you're going to get a far better product because of the collaboration. And there are goals and objectives for this year and 2017. I would tell you that next year, if I'm providing and submitting the goals, we'll have a much deeper presentation. As you know, I've only been doing this for, it seems like a few months, about two and a half months or so. So I'm still kind of a new guy on the block, but so far, things have been going very well, and I do appreciate the ability to provide services to Madison and be part of the team here with the. services to Madison and be part of the team here with the existing staff members. And especially since they are all recognized as Employees of the Month, I think that was very nice and surely appreciated by myself. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Questions for Mike? All right. Thank you very much. Well done. Next, construction official, Russ Brown.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Started off, I felt a little slighted with just two slides, but I think we'll make up for it now. Building Department, last year, if we look at our accomplishments, Building Department had a great year, pretty busy. And if you heard the report tonight, I think we're off to a...
Changed the slide there, so we're, people at home watching on TV can, oops.
Thank you. Yeah, so if we look at some of the accomplishments from last year, we did 2,000 permits, over 8,000 stops, you know, inspections, kept us pretty busy, and 1,800 different certificates. And one of the biggest, you know, demands on the department of the last couple of years is the Oprah request. Dealing with Oprah is, is just time-consuming and labor-intensive, especially with Chatham is not as up to speed as, as Madison is as far as being electronic and able to search the records. You know, all that being said, we did nearly a million dollars in revenue. And like I said, this, this past January, we're already up 200,000. So we've been pretty busy. Our goals for next year are really just to keep up with the, with the demand. There's, everything is kind of coming together. I know I spoke to Councilman Landergin last year in regard to keeping up with KRE. I think the bulk of those inspections are going to happen this year. You know, we did all the concrete work, which is primarily just the, the building portion. I spoke with their site super this morning. They're getting ready to set up some sample apartments for the electrical and plumbing and fire to review. Also met with Allergan and Drola Farms, they're looking to occupy in August. So, you know, that's a condensed, condensed timeframe as well. On my desk right now, we have the, the application for the footing and foundation for the parking garage. So it's, it's off to a, to a busy year. Some of the other stuff we're trying to do is streamline the Oprah process. Like, as I said, the, Chatham is the most challenging. But through the use of educating them with our portal, we have a portal program, and they're using that now, just recently. And we're starting to get the realtors up to speed on how to use that, and it really cuts some of the phone calls. If you look on the first page or the first slide that we had, some of the phone call demand, I honest, I don't know how they're doing it. You know, the staff is... 1,700 phone calls, 17,000 phone calls? Yeah. And again, primarily part-time department. So it's keeping things hopping. So next year, like I said, we're looking to keep up with, with the inspection demand, keep everybody happy, try and get Allergan in August, and keep KRE moving along, and Mark Bill getting their projects going as long as, as well as keeping all the residents in their projects on time. The other big project that we worked on last year was closing out of old permits. There's, over the years, it really kind of just fell by the wayside. We took advantage of the program with the Drew students, and, and they, they did a great job. 1,800 different certificates, 1,800 permits were closed out last year. So we'd like to keep that going. I don't know how much we'll be able to manage this year, but we're gonna, we're gonna give it a go. You know, to cover... Took care of that already. To cover some of the, the budget comments is, you know, the bulk of our, our operation is covered by our permit revenue. So we're running in the, in the black. And again, to utilize the intern program to take up any of the slack. That's kind of where we're at.
Sounds good. Questions for Russ? Keep it up.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next one, for the last time ever, library director Nancy Adamcheck, who will be retiring in 2017. And President of the Board of Trustees, Bintinger.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you again. As Bob, the mayor, said, it's my last time. 2016 was a very busy year. Much of our focus goes back to the recommendations of our strategic planning process, which outlined that the library needs to provide convenient, continuous, customer-focused library service. And this led to examine our technology infrastructure, which was a very critical point in our strategic plan. The second point was to innovate and develop new service models, which led us to increase our lifelong learning opportunities. And perhaps the one we have focused on the most is reimagining and refreshing our facility. In terms of our technology infrastructure, we have done a lot of work. We do share a part-time technology assistant with the Library of the Chatham's, so we have a shared services employee. But in terms of infrastructure, our, we increased and upgraded our new Wi-Fi system. We ran all new cabling in our adult room because we found the, the cable was just, had just gone totally bad, and the, the runways, whatever they call them, were wet and so forth. So we ran all new cable. Also, all the network closets were reorganized. And this was funded by the Friends of the Library, as well as the library budget. We did do a total remodeling in our back office, which makes more efficient work, staff workspace in that area. And the lobby started with the HVAC project back in, late in 2015. And at that time, we had new ceiling and lighting put in. And then the library continued with new carpet and recently added some new furnishings. We're still working on our picture book room, pardon me, but it's almost finished. Will be finished this week, I think. We have all new AV system in there, LCD projector and CD player and so forth. Again, that ceiling was abated, so it has all new ceiling, lighting. We filled in the story hour pit, which was a little controversial, but we did it for safety reasons. And we have total new carpeting in there. So, as I say, it was a busy year. We have also done a great deal of programming and increase in services. We expanded our selection of eBooks, and this is something we do through our main consortium of libraries in Mars County. Thanks to the bequest of Laurie Tabor, we have digitized the Madison Eagle from 1882 to 2001. We introduced something called Fresh Picks, which is a weekly email alert on new books. The Friends had a successful Touch a Truck, which you all approved, thank you very much, last July. And we added a new program registration component to our website, because a lot of our programming does require registration. Statistically speaking, we had over 118,000 visitors. We borrowed over 217,000 items from our collection. We sponsored over 400 programs for all ages that attracted over 14,000 attendees. For example, the Summer Reading Club attracted over 600 children. The Summer Seminars that we co-sponsor with the Senior Center attracted over 700 people. And we're planning that session for again this summer. We registered over 1,200 new patrons. We have a staff of 12 full-time people and 22 part-time that staff our public service hours of 60 hours during the school year and 56 in the summer. So in terms of 2017, first one is searching for a new library director, and that is well underway. In fact, probably will be coming to a close very shortly. And that's trustee responsibility. I anticipate that my successor will join the staff sometime in April, as my retirement date is May 1st. And I'm sure the new director will be reviewing all aspects of the library and developing additional goals. But the goals that we developed last fall include installing the shelving in the picture book room, which should just about finish up that project. Last week, we installed a monitor in the lobby, and that is for additional PR purposes. And they will be, as I leave, looking at the use of the building and working with a consulting firm, it looks like, in terms of planning for the next stages of building reworking. In 2017, we anticipate that we will be looking at our space. That will be our prime focus, addressing the usage of the building. Libraries, you know, I've worked for many, many years in the library, and there are certainly very different ways the library is being used, far more demand for our study rooms, new groups using the Chase Room, the public bringing their laptops in, using our study carols, and the use of the public computers has gone down somewhat. So we are seeing changes in terms of use of the library. A goal, we also hope to introduce a Makerspace. Thanks to a generous donor, we just purchased a 3D printer, and there will be other things coming for a Makerspace, and we're going to have to make a space, literally, for that. So that will be another aspect of that project. I expect other technology improvements will be coming along, including mobile printing and some self-checkout units, and introducing a new website very shortly. And on my list that I'll be leaving for the new director, I will remind him or her that there's discussions that need to occur, and the borough is very interested in us doing more PR through Rosnet and so forth. So we do acknowledge that, and we're, we're working toward that end. A committee has been formed between the Historical Society and the library to update the Madison Heritage Trail. The library does own the copyright to that book, which was written back in the 80s by Dr. Frank Esposito, and he is going to be working with them again. And we want to continue our work with the local school system. In terms of budget comparison, the salaries level... What did I do?
Backwards.
Sorry. Salaries are stable. We've had a number of staffing changes in recent years, some due to retirements. We've gone heavily to a part-time staff, which of course is slowing down the growth of the salary and benefits line items. Already mentioned, we have a shared services employee. We did increase our budget for books and media, and this is going primarily toward additional eBooks and downloadable audiobooks. And I should say, the Friends, thanks to everybody who contributes to the Friends and supports their fundraisers, also heavily supports the collection. Utilities, since the installation of our HVAC system, we are anticipating a $10,000 decrease in those costs for this year. The technology budget does fund our Rosnet costs and our main consortium, which is our consortium of libraries in Mars County. And the other costs have increased to just under $10,000. I'm going to cover this part of it. Tom Bintinger, our board president, is going to talk about the capital, since I will not be involved in those projects. But do you have any questions in particular about what we've already discussed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Tom? You're on.
Thank you. As you can tell, a lot of what we've been doing is trying to update the library for the 21st century. Our strategic plan that we had in 2012 was like a three-to-five-year project, and as all plans go, things kind of keep rolling forward. It anticipated having HVAC done earlier. And the capital plan that you see here, you end up with architectural studies and roof design. The roof was planned for 2017 in last year's budget, and as everything happens, everything starts to roll on that basis. That will then take place in 2018. The architectural engineering studies are going to involve, hopefully, the completion of most of our asbestos abatement program. As you know, when we talked about it, goes back to 2011, 2012, we had a consultant come in, take a look, analyze the asbestos content. And we've been slowly working using the approach of when something had to be worked, either due to problems, or we were going to be modernizing an area, tried to do it at that point in time. We are now left with the two big, major areas in the library, the children's room and the adult services room. And that, the asbestos is in the ceilings there, and that will undertake a major engineering, architectural study, because you then have to redo the lighting, as we did when we had the new HVAC project in some of the areas. So you will see in the outline years, some numbers out there. Those were, I can't even call them educated guesses. We do know, we have a bogey number that we had when we did the asbestos study, some over, between $600,000 and $700,000 of the '18, '19, '20, and '21, it's buried in there. We know that that is the expected cost of dealing with the asbestos in those remaining rooms. The rest of it is going to be dealing with interior use of the space. Nancy commented on having, we're doing our first study this year, using the consultant to take a look how we allocate collections, how much should be dedicated to stacks, what should be done with the other types of media that we have, how we should be using it, how we use for study. Teen area is a very, very big. Right now, we have just kind of a dedicated area in the adult room, not a very good, effective use of that space. So we're starting the planning, and hopefully, in this period of time, we will have a, an approach. We are starting to raise funds internally to support that project. We have a nice start on that. And then hopefully, in that period of time, come 2021, we will be, I think, a total updated library for at least the coming next 50 years. As you know, the building is roughly 50 years old. '68, '69, I think was the cornerstone, is '68. So we're doing a lot of remodeling work. As Nancy mentioned, the children's picture book room, again, the lobby area, those were all things that trying, as we build out and totally try to redo on a systematic basis and know what we're looking at. So any questions on, I guess, that, I think, a major issue?
Bob?
Yes.
Tom, just a quick question. The abatement work, that's been known for quite a while, so this isn't anything new.
Correct.
And the total dollars, like you mentioned, it's what you call the bogey number, but it's within the ballpark of what you...
But it was based on the square footage that they would have to abate.
Right.
And we've been generally, on the numbers that we had originally used and the numbers that we had presented to the council, we've been coming in under in each of those years. Hopefully, we'll be able to have a much better. The big challenge is, we have to close the building, and it's going to be for an extended time. Every time we close the building, there is a significant undertaking about getting people, where do you service them? And if we're in this major abatement area in the children's and the adult room, we probably are very going, have to look for alternative space to operate, because we will be closed for a sizable period of time. So it's just very difficult. We tried to do it with the HVAC. Bob Vogel can tell you, it was like a moving target. Every time we thought we were going to be able to open, something else came up. And so what was going to be a two-week ended up with a six-week project. So I think anticipating that same thing, we're going to probably have to do other things. I think that's going to be a prime area for our new library director. And the activities, I think, that will be undertaken by the board and, I think, the Borough Engineering Department.
Is the temporary space built into those numbers? Let's see if you have...
It's, until we really figure out how much and what we're going to do is a major area of us. And for me to sit here and say, we know... And for me to sit here and say, we know it's going to be, we just seen a study that was done by the Library of the Chatham's. They have had a plan to spend $4.5 million on their existing building to totally redo their interior space. They're making their, you know, their plans, looking with both the township and the borough, and then looking to see, okay, then what has to be supported by public funding. And I think we're going to be in the same way.
Yeah. I mean, to your credit, you've managed the asbestos abatement almost internally and done an excellent job with it, with minimal financial. This is, like you said, the big one that's got to get done.
Yes. I think we're here, and we know we have to do it. And you can't really touch the interior until you get done with what's sitting up overhead, and then you can start to work on the interior space. And I think with this consulting, and maybe looking at the architects and engineers, we may have to move some walls and stuff on the inside, but I think that will be a minor piece of the project, but it will be there.
Pat, and then Maureen?
Yeah, okay. So in terms of the abatement and the redoing the adult and children's, are you saying they're two separate projects that the library is going to close both times, or you're going to do it all at once?
The major problem is, because of the HVAC, it totally distributes air throughout, so you literally have to close the whole building in order for that to be done. So the idea of bringing in an abatement project and designing that, it makes sense, at least to, I think, our original thought process is, get both of those rooms done, so you don't have to close for abatement. Maybe you can then start to work in those existing rooms, so you may only have to close one when you're working on the interior space, and maybe can shift some space use in the other room as it's going through. If you were designing a building today, when that building was built in the late '60s, the children's room is relatively small for the demand that's placed on it. That's why we tackled the picturebook room. We needed additional performance, you know, program type of activities. Nancy didn't, we had a little picture in there, I don't know if any of you paid any attention, when there was a picture at the lower right, there was a tile that was in to memorialize the old picturebook pit for people, so that they would know that's what was there. It turns out that the kids love it, because we've been using it for programs, waiting for the shelving to be going through.
Okay.
Very, very good.
The other issue is, I mean, combined with the lighting and the other work, I think it's about 1.2 million.
Yes.
If you add in the plaza and fountain repairs, that's another 150. As Jim pointed out, we're going to be challenged to come up with the amount of money that we're being asked for in '18, '19, and probably beyond. I think we're going to have to ask almost everybody to take a look at the amount of money we're going to be able to allocate in any year. And, you know, to some degree, these were a surprise. I know that we've had a sort of an abatement plan on the horizon, but when I went back the last couple of years and looked at the library's capital request for the, through 2019, I think the largest number I saw was previously 230,000. For 2018, it was 375. So these numbers have bumped up quite a bit, and the out years are getting to be just as expensive. So I understand what you're saying, you're going to need to do, but I think we're going to be challenged to fund all this in the timeframe you're looking for it.
I think rather, as an old accountant, hate to understate something, and all of a sudden you get in the middle of it, and then you have to keep adding dollars to it. So trying to be realistic, but I think the primary thing, I think, through, you know, Bob Vogel and Ray Cody, you know, hire some good consultants to come in and take a look at the space, get a decent plan that you know what you're dealing with first. So that's the dollars up there in that original, like even the roof. We had a bid on that several years ago, and the $300,000 was about the neighborhood that they were going to charge for that. We're assuming that, cost haven't gone up that much because of materials, a lot of, I think, they're much more efficient in terms of what they do.
Okay.
We had to get the HVAC done first, because they were up there working on the roof, and we didn't want them ripping the roof apart while you're putting the HVAC in, so it's kind of like a domino.
Okay. Last question, the asbestos abatement is not required because of current exposure?
No.
This is strictly because, as you want to repurpose a space, you're going to touch the walls and the ceilings?
Yeah, we have, what we have is a project, we, every, from six to nine months, we bring the consultants in, they monitor the air, make sure that there's not any things that are anything, so it's just a consistent thing. We just have built into the operating budget that has to be monitored.
Thank you. Maureen?
But you're not, but you're not leaving the asbestos in place? This is a project to remove all of the rest of the asbestos from-
Well, yes, everything, there's little footnotes. There are asbestos areas in the back office area, Nancy's office, the staff room, the little administrative areas. Again, they end up being the most expensive, because they got to rip the thing down in the tight space, whereas when they're working in the big, it's just, for them to set up all their abatement containment, et cetera, it's just much more efficient. You know, it ended up, like when we even did the little picturebook room, that was, turned out to be, just for the abating people without restoring the ceiling, that was over 20,000, around $20,000. And then you have to replace the ceiling, you have to replace the lights and everything in there. So it ended up being, you know, it was still less than what we had in that original plan.
And the library, once you do this abatement, and you have cleaned out the adult room, and you've cleaned out the children's room?
That is it.
Are you, are you looking to reconfiguring the spaces so that they reflect better the way the library is being used? I mean, I go in, I see, after school, I see tutoring going on in the library, tutors using the tables. Obviously, if there were small rooms that could be rented-
We have, we have rooms that they are using, and that's the overflow that our people are out on the floor.
But do we, do we get, do we get anything from those tutors for using those rooms?
No. It's a, quotes a service. No, should there be a fee charged? We don't let them advertise or anything of that nature, conduct any business, any work that they're doing there is actually working with students. We have a tutoring policy that we manage in terms of how that is to be done. So it's not that we're supporting people's home business, you know, but it is, I think, a safe site for people to come and let their, it's particularly junior high and high school students that are in that space that are using it. So I think it's something that we really should offer in terms of a safe space where people can come and provide that for the patrons and the Madison citizens.
And, but, but I mean, we're going, it seems that, I mean, I still read hardback books, but it seems to me that we're, we're moving, despite the numbers that you showed, Nancy, and I was really impressed at the numbers of things that got taken out, but we're, we're moving away from the printed page.
Well, that's what we're trying to study, how much should be devoted to the collection in terms of your allocating your space. That's one of the things that we hope to achieve by this first study that we're going to do. They work with a number of libraries throughout the country. In fact, they did a study for the Madison Library back in the 80s, before we did the addition in the late 80s, early 90s.
Okay.
Ben?
Yes, thank you. When the strategic plan came out, I had the understanding that this would be a multi-year This would be a multi-year project, and then at the end of it, you'd go into maintenance mode again. Is that still the case? So can we assume, say, in 2022, that it's significantly lower number?
Oh, yes. My reaction is, once this gets done, what I call the major capital type of items, if you notice in the library budget, we have been providing for what I call the minor changes and things of that nature, that we just feel that we can squeeze out. You know, the Friends, they donated a sizable contribution for Touch a Truck for the children's picturebook room. We had several donors that also came up with some money for that.
Good. Thank you. Okay, Maureen?
One more question. You, you obviously, or not obviously, hopefully, are embarking on a capital, you know, a capital funding project. What, what do you project raising to put towards this project?
Really, you know, that is kind of blue sky at this point in time. I think the particular thing is, in order for us to have a plan, because if you're going to go out and ask the public, it's just the same as you asking, you know, as the Borough Council, in terms of maintaining the building, that you have to have something that somebody can see. And I think that's what we tried to do, some of these smaller spaces, like the lobby, that was an opportune time to really remodel that, the picturebook room, and then build on that. The assignment of space to the stacks is, I think, a major area that we have. We have, as part of the strategic plan, the, each of the children's and the adult services people have undertaken a big weeding project that, it's almost like, you don't add anything, we've actually reduced some stacks in there, it's hard to tell, but we have. So when we're going to go out, I think it's going to be a seven, low seven-digit number. It depends, again, how much is being funded, you know, with the borough, as well as, you know, the combination thereof, to get the whole thing done and accomplished.
And I would recommend pursuing any grant opportunities going forward, because that-
Yes. Yeah, well, as I said, we've had, we've accumulated some funds starting in that, and we've got a nice start in that particular area.
As we move on to the next one, I just want to apologize a little bit to the audience, like 10, I like to bore mindful the agenda and not go this late, but obviously, we have, so we will keep on moving forward, and next year, we'll make a note of it, so we can spread out our department presentations over two nights, or keep them to shorter slides, one or the other. And for the first time, I'd like to introduce our Director of Public Works, Ken O'Brien, who might be hobbling, because he broke a couple of toes doing his laundry, and we'll, we'll find out about that offline. And also, as he hobbles up there, I want to recognize, we have several DPW crew in the audience, and thank you for all your work over the, it's a long, I know it's been a long day, because you're out there 5:00 AM this morning, taking care of the ice, and here you are, listening to these presentations, and this is after a busy week last week, with a first significant snow and the mess on Sunday, so thank you for all you do. Ken, welcome.
Thank you, Council. Also, in the audience, one of our members, Mr. Finelli, has 30 years with the Borough of Madison. So, welcome to the Borough of Madison, and welcome, Ken O'Brien, to the Borough of Madison. You know, today is my 16th day with the Borough, and I can tell you that I've been through this budget quite often during, in snowstorms and ice storms and everything else in between, and I'm learning quite a bit about the Borough, as the men and women are learning a little bit about itself. And I can tell you that, you know, during this last storm, in the last three weeks, what I've seen is, there's a very good group of men and women in the Department of Public Works that are eager to work for the Borough, look at different directions, and look at technology, and see how we can go about doing things in a better way. And there's, not to say that there was bad management before, but what I will tell you is that, in today's technology, technology is a very big part of our organization. And new equipment, I feel that we should be able to do some jobs in-house that we may be contracting out. And the reason for that is, we don't have a profit margin to cover. So if there's some jobs I'm going to look at in the next year that we're doing, you know, contracting out, that we can do in-house, we're going to take a real serious look at that and see if we can do it for our cost. Here's some slides of some pictures I took in the last 15 or 16 days. We had a snowstorm, this is one of our machines that does the sidewalks around a municipal building, that's one of our newest trucks that's out salting and does it, and we're doing the crosswalks, and just a couple of trucks plowing around town. Our goal for 2017, and I'm going to be very brief about this, because I've had a brief stay here in Madison, is to increase productivity and clear management and leadership. And my idea is that in the next year, just keep looking at every aspect of management, managing each position, and just see where we can maybe tighten it up and do a little bit of a better job. I think my first week here, we had a water main break on one of the side roads, and I came in, and the water company was, was working on it, the water division was working on it, and I thought it went really well. It was done correctly, the hall was done to the right size, the amount of guys that were working on the job were doing right. And the only misstep we took was on the administration end. And that administration misstep was, I didn't notify the residents on that street and those businesses that there was going to be water interruption. And that was because I had only been employed by the town for five days, and wasn't aware of the exact consequence of that. And, you know, I was told that one place, you know, had to shut down for breakfast or something. So on one end, we did a very good job. On the other side, we didn't do such a good job. So that's one of the things I'm going to work on with the men and women in our organization, is to bring our infrastructure of technology up. We're behind the times in some areas with technology, and we want the residents in the business district to know what we're doing and when we're doing it. You're looking at someone who uses Facebook and Instagram and all that. So we're going to use RoseNet, we're going to use that stuff, and we're going to start ramping it up over a period of time, so that people know what we're doing. Because I think sometimes the perception may be, if someone's doing something in, you know, a park or on a building, they may not be doing it the most efficient. And we don't know that. There might be a reason for it. So we're going to work on that in the next year, and that's one of our goals. Clean up and organize the public works facility, there's a few projects that got started that I think weren't completed. We're going to put some new garage doors on the building. We are going to do some general maintenance and cleanup that we should be doing. Our EJF inspector, which is the environmental inspector from the insurance company, came down for a walk, and I took a brief tour with him, and he's going to, he gave me a few ideas to do, and he'll be back in three weeks to do another tour around with us, and he expects to see a few things changed, which we're on target for that right now. I've obtained administrative help and implement new technology, I just spoke a little bit about that. One of the things I'm going to look at with Mr. Cody and Mr. Burnett is see if we can job-share some of the people with the technology assistance you have here at this building, maybe if people can come down here and help us ramp up a little bit, besides just the IT, but there may be a way that we can have someone come down, help our staff a little bit, ramp up on the technology part. And I call that job-sharing or borrowing for a few hours a week, until the administrative staff is really where we want it to be. I'm going to advance work order plan for each division, so that everybody pretty much knows the night before they go home what they're doing the next day. I think all the men are prepared, when they come into work, they have rain gear, they have safety gear, but myself, as being a worker, and when I was in the workforce, it was pretty nice to know kind of what you were doing the next day, you know, regardless of an emergency, so we're going to have work plans where the supervisors will have a pretty good idea of what they're doing Thursday, Friday, looking at next week, the weather, are we going to have some work inside, are we going to be painting buildings, are we going to be doing some maintenance work outside, is it going to rain, is it not going to rain? So we'll have a pretty good schedule on that. And then, Mr. Burnett and myself and Mr. Cody are going to review the collective bargaining agreement, head negotiations, to see if there's anything we can do to make it a little bit more flexible for the Borough of Madison, and also for the employees to help keep employed and hire people. That is my goals for looking at my budget. Capital budget? Midway through, there is a fuel dispenser, canopy, and lights and monitor, there's a new system that we're using, and it's just not completed yet. When the fuel system was put in for the vehicles, the system was not, the ground and the grading was not exact, and the tanks are not covered. And we have above-ground tanks at our facility holding a large amount of fuel and gasoline, and we think that they should be covered up in a, not just quite in an enclosure, but they should have some type of cover over them, and be a little bit inconspicuous, because there's so much above-ground fuel. I did not put together this capital budget, but I've been working on it full strength in the last 15 days, up until 5:00 tonight, and the $180,000 is for a truck. I'm not so sure that the Borough of Madison, the truck that has been laid out to purchase, if that's exactly what I would buy. So one thing I've talked to Mr. Burnett about is maybe having a little flexibility with that truck. I think that we could haul more of our own stuff, so I'm going to be looking at a truck that will be what we call a- that will be what we call a roll-off truck. And that roll-off truck can also carry a salt spreader or a dumpster. If you get a big storm, it can have a chipper box on it. So when you're doing leaf disposal, you can take a dumpster to a park or something like that and get all the leaves in a big pile and have a loader load them in there rather than taking them out in much smaller truckloads. So you'd be able to take them out in 18- or 20-yard loads rather than six- or seven-yard dumpsters like we currently have in the back of Mason Dumps. And the reason for that is obviously just more efficiency. More efficiency. If you can blow all the leaves from one park into a big pile and scoop them up rather than having to suck them up into a little dump truck, you'll be much more ahead of the game. And that's it. So I would gladly entertain any questions.
Any questions regarding the capital? Well done, and welcome, Madison. Coming up next is engineering, and Bob, not to short shrift you since we are getting late, during the year, you've done much, a lot of updates on accomplishments, so I think we can skip past that part and just go right to capital. Yep. That is what we want to talk about. So let's, I think we're talking page, page 44.
I just want to say that our land use department, in terms of Franny, Frank, and Danny, processed more zoning permits this year than any time in our industry, so they deserve a little bit of, a couple goes for them.
That's good to get them. Thank you for...
Over to capital. You want to do the stormwater system?
Yep, stormwater.
Okay, so under the 2017 line item, the Alma Street culvert is something that's been on the schedule to do for several years. Is currently being bid. We have the design plans done, and we were hoping to get that project done during the summer in 2017. So as far as potential savings down the line for 2017, I'm very unlikely. I think as you look at 2018, 2019, and 2020, Jim, if I can, can we just go forward and do that as far as looking down the line and what potential savings there might be? Because that seems to be the objective. Under item one, you have below with culvert, which is currently under permitting requirement for NJDEP. Now, that is something that Bauman has already given us a proposal on, and we'll proceed on this year in 2017. But oftentimes, those general welland permits that would be required would turn into a multi-year event with the EP, and so there's a chance there that the 2018, 2019 expenses could be deferred. And that would, would help us as far as the bottom line. And at the end of the discussion here, we go back to Jim's point about trying to maintain 4.2 over time for general capital. That could help a lot. Also, as you run down the Spring Garden Brook Phase Four, that's a project that's already been designed. The plans are in-house, but we need an individual welland permit from the DEP in order to do that. Now, for anyone familiar, an individual welland permit from DEP oftentimes is a multi-year event, and we haven't even started that permit process yet. And so again, that $200,000 very likely will be deferred over time. And so when we start that individual permit process and when we actually do that project, it was certainly optimistic thinking it could be done in 2018, and that project can probably be deferred in terms of helping load level the bottom line on general capital. Any questions about those projects? No? Go on to the next. Sanitary?
Okay, so in terms of this year, we have a carryover project for, it's already been awarded to National Water Main for the sewer lining and sewer investigation work. Now, we had originally set up that as a five-year program at $285,000 a year with the consultation of our consultant, Client Filter. And the potential, in my mind, is to make that a six- or a seven-year project in terms of investing, investigating all the mains in town and remediating some of the INI issues over a longer period of time. That might reduce that 285 to 200 over a larger number of years, and I don't think it's unreasonable to proceed on that basis. Potential bottom line savings at $85,000, 2018, 2019, 2020. And again, the whole effort trying to load level general capital. Any questions about the projects on sanitary? The next item is the building and grounds capital. Obviously, we've been feverishly looking for funding partners and contracts for the East Wing renovation and the plaza work out in front of the building. We've had several progressive estimates come in from our consultant, Clark Hayden Hints, which at last blush was up to about 1.6, including a lot of contingency. And so the question becomes really, will we get the funding that we're looking for from the county and state sources? And we don't have those answers yet. We have the applications in. We don't have the answers, and so potentially, it's hard to know if the, if the $500,000 proposed in 2018 will ever become a reality given what we, what we'll receive in terms of funding. And so, you know, at this point, the 2018 number could be questionable. Although I think as far as the plaza work is concerned, we'd certainly like to run that to construction. I know Mike Piano, who spoke last week, said he was essentially ready to start the sidewalk work out in front of the building and do the relighting of the areas with the historic lanterns in front of Harley Dodge Memorial, which is a huge improvement. And I think we should, we should move forward with as soon as we possibly can. So potential, potential work this year would be the asbestos work inside in the East Wing and the plaza restoration. And again, based on funding, potentially work in 2018 as far as the East Wing renovation's concerned. Any question on buildings and grounds?
One question about the funding from the county. When do they make their decisions about the grants they're going to give out?
I believe the county is June, Ray? Is it June, July?
Uh, no. I think they use that now some, but they actually are...
That far out.
So, so you're talking about November. Does that mean we're really going to wait until that point before we decide if we're going to move ahead with the restoration of the plaza? Or are we recommending we move ahead and hope we get money from the county?
Right now, in place, we have a potential commitment from the Madison Historical Society for $250,000. We have $150,000 grant from the State Historic Trust. They just announced a new funding round. We're probably going to take another run at that. The county, we're meeting with later in the week, Bob and I, with the head of the program and his boss, and the director, planning for the county to explore why we were not funded fairly, in our opinion, last round for this building and also the museum was not treated fairly, to see if there's a better way that we could get more dollars allocated to the project. Based on that reaction to that meeting, we'll have a feel for how much we have in place, and then we probably would sit down with our funding partners and see if there's an appetite if we're short and the governing body can't fill that gap, whether our funding partner is able to come forward with additional funding. Other than that, we don't have $1.6 million for this project.
What is the actual number, Bob, for the plaza restoration? If we had no, no funding from anybody else?
It was just shy of $500,000, Pat.
Okay. Because, I mean, that's something that we have to do. That's a safety issue. The restoration of the East Wing is really something we want to do, but it's not really as time-sensitive as trying to get the plaza fixed before we have a serious incident.
Makes sense.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, next one. Water.
The big change in water, obviously, we talked about a little bit out of utilities last week. That was a large addition to the scope and the cost of the water main replacing in Central Avenue. That's shown on page two of your presentation. Center in the middle there. So that Central Avenue add is something that we had to talk to the county about in terms of scheduling. And I spoke with Chris Fitz last, last week, and he agreed that our infrastructure replacement should take priority over any paving the county has scheduled. And the, the additional funds that have been requested on the water utility capital obviously are going to be, we're going to need to make some adjustments over time in terms of, in terms of not overspending the capital. And so I've looked through some of the other line items moving forward. I think from my perspective, it's a little premature without Tom here talking about other line items down the line to say that some of these utility line items can be deferred. However, you know, the well A improvements could very likely come in under the $300,000 in 2018. We have a draft set of plans from Mount McDonald on my desk as of this week, which we can show to the utility committee next time we meet. And potentially, we could, we could look at either advancing that project or delaying that project as, as, as the, as the need allows. Essentially, well A is up and operating now. It has been functioning reasonably. It is working well with their new SCADA system. So the potential is to defer a project there in 2018 if we need that to help balance capital demands over the next five years. As far as other projects are concerned, I'm just going to put it out there if anyone has any questions, because there's quite a few.
Ben?
Yeah, just very quickly, the Midwood tank, the re-bending of the tank.
Yes.
Are those new numbers? I don't recall it being that expensive nor taking that long.
Let's see, Midwood tank, well...
$200 a year for three years.
It's a good question, Ben. You know, Madison tank, when we did it, was $350,000 inside and out. And so what the consultant, and again, we had Mount McDonald advise us on some of these numbers, they felt that completely enclosing the tank with scaffolding was going to be important for OSHA compliance moving forward. And so all of a sudden, you have a $350,000 painting project that just rose in cost to what it is. And so the $600,000 total, if you do that work, is not inconsistent with other projects.
Too bad.
Yep.
So for 2017 on road reconstruction work, we had a Central Avenue sidewalk that was part of the project list. That still remains to be bid. For 2018, however, there are some opportunities for cost savings if asphalt pricing stays with what it is this year. We got very good prices so far from the county co-op. Stavola had actually put in $58 a ton for asphalt pricing, which was a good 20% lower than what we had estimated for reconstruction work. So potentially savings for 2018 through 2021 will come if asphalt prices remain relatively, relatively low the way they are. Strange how the fuel tax would go up and the asphalt prices would go down, but that's the way it's paid out so far this year. Any questions about road reconstruction? I think the opportunities for savings may be $200,000 or more, 2018 through 2021.
My, in the 2017, you have 1.8?
Adam, I think that the first row of 2017 projects were lit because they felt like, I think we had assumed that since we appropriated, we had actually appropriated the money already, Mayor.
Okay. That's right. Thank you.
Okay. Going over to Mill and Overlay?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll say that Ray and, Ray and I will sit down with Bob. We'll sit down, do some of this. What we'll do is come back with, we'll review last year's five-year plan, show you which departments increased significantly, and then we'll come back with, Bob's going to be the one that I think is going to be able to yield the most in terms of savings. And we'll email something to you before the next meeting to see that we can get close to the numbers.
So agreed as far as Mill and Overlay, again, with $58 a ton in place price from Stavola, and our estimates were closer to 75, there's some real cost savings available to us over time if asphalt prices stay low. So again, 2018 through 2021, I would estimate $200,000 potentially. In the summary, again, Jim has the, the conclusion being 4.2 million being our goal. We have these capital meetings quarterly. We won't stop, and we'll keep trying to refine the requests as, as the years, as the year goes forward. And, you know, hopefully, we can come up with that number at the end of the year this year. Won't be easy, but we'll do our best. If we have to defer a project, we'll have to. But again, with asphalt prices being low on the roads, there's some real cost savings available to us in the short term. Any questions about capital?
Any questions for Bob?
Just one question, Bob. Our, our best practice has been on projects that we anticipate having a funding partner with the state, that we advance 100% of the money and wait to be reimbursed from the state. If we didn't follow that strategy, instead waited for the grant award, instead of advancing 100%, we just advance our portion, how would that hurt your program?
Well, our, I guess our policy, certainly over the past three or four years, has been not to anticipate money in the capital budget even till we get the money. And so if we're going to change that aspect of it, then certainly your capital budgeting will go down. So I'm not sure if that answers the question, but...
Three would is a big, big number you're going to apply to the state to fund it.
We have already.
If we're advancing 100%, if we do, if we apply, wait till we get it, and then...
Well, if we, if we anticipate the income from the state, you can automatically drive your capital budget by $300,000.
Any other questions? Okay, before we go to questions or comments from the audience on the budget only, I hate to have to do this, but a logistic thing, I need a motion to extend beyond 11:00 p.m. We haven't done this in a long time. Extend to, we...
11:30?
I guess we'll, we'll try to get done before 11:30, but yeah. So we have all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So any questions or comments on the budget only from the audience? Please step forward, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Rob Catalonello, Woodland Road, Madison, New Jersey. As it pertains to the library, the $2 million request, you may recall, Bob, when we were on council together back in 2011, I suggested after we learned about the asbestos that we find a new building. Because after all, the library isn't the building itself, but it's what's contained therein, right? It's the learning, it's knowledge, it's education, all of which are fantastic goals, and we should be judged by how well we educate our, our children. In 2011, the five-year capital plan that was presented to us after some cajoling was around $800,000. As Pat pointed out, over the years, we would get these sort of trickles of increases, but nothing near the, nothing near the magnitude of this. So at the risk of once again being labeled a enemy of the library, which nothing could be further from the truth, as you know, based on my family's commitment to education, how do we know, based on the history of these budgets coming in ridiculously low versus what the actual cost is? Because I'm quite sure over the past five or six years, we've spent well in excess of $800,000 on the library, that we're going to be anywhere close. And shouldn't we at least consider, at least consider finding a new home for such an important part of our town? You know, I see that there's $2 million up here in terms of just abatement, basically. When you start... When you start moving things around, it gets even more expensive. And it just so happens that with the work I do with Villanova, we are undertaking a new library. So it's quite topical, and we're basically removing almost all the stacks. And most major universities are headed in that direction. So I think there's a lot of work to do, not only in terms of the physical plant for that building in particular, but also in, you know, really modernizing the way we, we teach our children how to use a library, so that they're well-prepared when they go to college. So I would really ask that you study this request and not grant any money until you have a real plan and a true estimate on what the cost is going to be. And again, I'm going to repeat what I said in 2011, maybe it's time that we try and find a new home for such an important part of our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And library trustee president is still here, so heard that, and it's certainly, those numbers in the out ears are, are high ones, and we, we do need to work at it as the board of trustees of the library and the council. So thank you for that. Anyone else want to comment on the budget? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And staff, you're welcome to stay beyond, but thank you for staying this late. You're, you're free to go. We now move to ordinances for hearings. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed at the first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on Monday, January 23, 2017. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 5, 2017, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 94 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Electric Utility to Authorize Reimbursement for Electric Infrastructure Improvements.
I open the hearing for ordinance five. Anyone wishing to comment on ordinance five, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 5-2017.
I second the motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 5-2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 6, 2017, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $274,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund to install bleachers at the Madison Recreation Center.
I open the hearing for ordinance 6, 2017. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 6-2017.
I'll second the motion.
Any further council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 6, 2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 7, 2017, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending and supplementing Chapter 185 entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, No Parking Certain Hours, to limit parking to four hours for all streets in Madison without more restrictive parking hours.
I open the hearing, and now this is finally your opportunity. I appreciate your patience. So step up the lecture and state your name and address.
My name's Tom Donvito, 77 Oak Circle in Madison.
Put the microphone closely.
I'm sorry. Short enough for me. My name's Tom Donvito. I'm a resident in Madison at 77 Oak Circle. Thank you, Mayor Connolly, and council members and others for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. I think that the, this ordinance is overly broad. I think most of the streets, or many of the streets in Madison, do not have a problem with the parking during the, during the day. And I think it should be narrowed to the streets that do have that parking. I mean, I went out this afternoon, took some photos of the streets, like this is Greenwood Abbott or 30, and there's looking down, sorry that, I don't have a slide, looking down, it's like one car parked in, on both sides of the street, there's only one car parked besides mine on several blocks of the street. And these are a couple of the side streets, Garden, no cars, that's between Greenwood and Central, and this is Grove Street, which has a few cars parked there. And the other issue is that the commuter parking lot is often full. I've gone there in late morning to park, to take the train, and not been able to find a spot there. And so I think if people need to be closer to train station, they could pay the $5 to park there, which I do sometimes, and other times when I have the time to walk about three-quarters of a mile, I'll park on Greenwood or on the streets nearby. I've been told that on the south side of the downtown area, there's a lot of commuters that really park and almost block the streets, and maybe that's where we need for our parking. We certainly don't need it on my street. This was again in the afternoon, and there's no cars at all on the street. And people might want to have a event at their house, a party or something like that, and they'll have more than enough cars that would fill their driveway. And in my life, more than four hours, and why should those cars have to move? One of the things that is great about Madison, and I've been here for over 30 years, and I love the town, is the access to the train into New York City. And why would we want to make that worse? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to address some of your concerns, the intent of this certainly was addressing a lot of commuters that are parking nearby, and the challenge of going one block at a time with more and more restrictions and more and more signs going out there was a challenge. Also, to say, okay, in a half-mile radius around the train station, to, to make it the law that way was going to be very difficult signage-wise. What this is not intended to do is to give out tickets on 7 Oak Circle or these areas where it is not an issue. It is intended for the neighborhoods that are having a problem, whether it's commuter-related or business-related, because a business is not living up to their agreement with a zoning agreement to find parking for their employees, that those neighborhoods can make a phone call and say, please patrol our neighborhood because our street is being clogged. The, and as I'm looking at our chief and lieutenant, and I think their agreement, they're not going to be sending people out to 7 Oak Circle unless.
Well, I've never turned to 7 Oak Circle. Typically, what I'll do when I'm going into the city is drive halfway to downtown, park on Greenwood, and there's plenty of parking there, and there's no businesses, and walk the three-quarters of a mile to the train station. If I'm in a hurry, I'll pay the $5 and be closer. I don't think we should have an ordinance in place that encompasses the whole town and then basically say, well, people can park on the street, and we're not going to enforce that ordinance. I think it would be better to have a directed ordinance that focuses on the streets that have an issue. And these pictures I showed you show that there's no issue, at least in, on the north side of the downtown area. And, and maybe on the other side, we need more ordinances that limit it, a few more blocks.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I think this ordinance will address your, your need, but.
Okay.
Yeah, if you didn't sign in, you should sign in. But next, next person, go ahead and, in light of the hour, announce your name, your address, and please write the same on the clipboard.
Ken Wasick, Prospect Street, Madison, New Jersey. First time doing this, so any mistakes I make, I apologize.
It's quite all right.
And I'd like it be on record, I'm up here against my will of my wife. She did not want me to speak, so put that in the record. Listen, I don't know, we all drive around Madison every day. I think I live on one of the most beautiful streets in Madison, beautiful houses, beautiful lawns. There's one thing you never see, cars. It makes it Madison unique. It's beautiful walking down our streets and having all those sightlines and everything like that. It's very disturbing when you see a crowded street in Madison. It takes away the flavor. So one is just beauty. I'm all for this ordinance, just to keep the beauty of Madison, the, the, the ability to walk down the street and not see tons of cars. Two is safety. It's happened on our street. We're one of the victims of this. If there's a community watch that happens in a street, that's essential. I can tell you, any car that's parked on our street, I probably know the owner. I can tell you, if someone's been there too long, if they've been there three days, we start worrying about it. There's just a community force. It's to help our children, make sure there's no one out there doing the wrong things. And it's very important, I think, to this ordinance, to give the police power for us to be able to call up and say, you know, that car's been there for a while, could you check it out? But also, it's just driving, you know? We don't have the whitest streets in Madison. Having multiple cars during the day makes it very dangerous. I, for one, have a hard time just getting out of our driveway when someone parked right across the street. It's dangerous, especially for four young drivers in my house. Last but not least, it's financial. Listen, parking revenues are essential to, to our community. Why are we letting people that don't even live in our community essentially skirt the payment for our parking? We have a beautiful parking lot right across the street from a beautiful train station. Let's enforce it. There's plenty of spots. I don't hear many people saying they can't find a spot. I, I don't see any reason to complain about this ordinance, other than you're trying to skirt an important part of a revenue-making part of our community. Last, I'll leave you with, with a funny thought is, I, as a resident and a taxpayer of Madison, cannot park on the street at night. And yet, people that don't live in Madison and are not paying taxes have the full ability to park on my street during the day. And I just find that odd. And, and I asked the council to enforce this. We've been working with the officers. They've been doing a great job. We think we've thought through all the different angles. I, I understand the complaint here, but, you know, the way we understand it is, this is not an excuse to give the police power to harass citizens at all. In fact, it's just the opposite, which is, the way we understand it is, as citizens, we have free right to park, just a simple call. We can park on the street, our own street, for, for extended points of time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Don?
Donald, Donald Rutter, 20 Redmond Drive. Is it, maybe Mr. Cody can answer this, is there a parking problem in Madison with the commuters, or where would they park if they can park on Belmont Avenue and the surrounding streets?
There, we have, for the most part, we accommodate Madison commuters through our permitted parking spots and the daily spots. We already, because of the fact that we had all-day parking on Belmont Avenue and Keep Street, put in the four-hour parking on those blocks, and what happened is the cars moved on to Pomeroy and other places. And so it, it is, it is an issue. And as I've, I've got on record many a times, I'm a firm believer in mass transit and getting people to use the railroad. But it is not Madison's obligation to provide parking for neighboring towns. I would love to have neighboring towns partner with Madison and maybe the state to provide parking methods to get people on the train to New York. So I'd love, love to hear from, you know, yes, we are in a way creating a problem for some of our neighboring towns, so let them come up with a, a solution we can work on together.
So these commuters will just have to go somewhere else, and?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, yeah. We gave you one shot at the apple, but, anyone else wishing to be heard on this?
Jim Kemp, 16 Wayne Boulevard in Madison. I need to start out with a quick question. I was given to understand that at least some earlier version of this ordinance included permitted overnight parking. Is that still the case?
Well, the overnight is a previous, that's an ordinance been in place a long time. I think the conversation was, the approach for this ordinance would be the same as the approach for the overnight. You have someone coming to your house to, to work all day long, and you're concerned that they might get ticketed, you know? In your neighborhood, it probably wouldn't happen, but let's say the, the house on Prospect Street has someone that's, you know, my house, I need someone cleaning for at least five hours, the way I am. So I could be able to go online and request permission for that person to park more than four hours, and that, just as we do for the overnight parking.
All right. I hadn't realized that there was, you could get a permit to park overnight, I mean routinely.
It's not necessarily, you know, if you're doing it on a regular basis, I think you might get a question as to why you're doing it on a regular basis.
All right.
Whether you have an overnight guest, or, you know, the old, someone had a little bit too much at a great party, and you don't want them on the road, you go online and they can spend the night.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Just with respect to the four-hour and commuter thing, I'm just going to follow up real quick on something that you mentioned about partnering with other towns. I'm aware of other places where there's shuttle service from outlying lots in other towns to bring you into. It's been done other places, and it is a solution that if another town wants to do, they can always do that.
Yep, that's a great idea. And we've also been trying to research the, what Summit has done with an Uber program, and if we can figure out how to expand that, that would be great, too. Anyone else wishing to comment on this ordinance?
My name's Bob Mataric. I, I also had read the article.
Address?
And I'm sorry, Wayne Boulevard, getting late, I'm tired. But I also read the, the article in the Madison Eagle, and they talked about overnight permits as something new, not as a continuation of an old policy. So is there some confusion in what, between what was printed in the paper?
Yeah, I, I think what the, the word was wrong in that overnight permission is what the policy's been. There is no such thing as overnight permit.
Yeah, they said this would be a new thing under.
No, so there is no, there is no such thing as a permit.
I, I was concerned about that because I noticed in the chief's excellent presentation that burglaries had gone up from 11 to 38, right? In one year. And a lot of cars parked on the street would be more likely to result in more burglaries. Jim mentioned shuttles. You could check with the town in Maplewood, they run shuttles. I guess it can be cost-effective if people pay a small fee so that the town doesn't pay for it, but it seems to be pretty successful for them. In Hoboken, they have resident stickers, so that there are places where you can park on one side of the street if you're a resident, but not on the other, even during the daytime. With the idea of maybe kind of not doing it, I don't know, I, maybe the first lawyer who gets a ticket down there is going to file a suit for selective enforcement, you know? So I, I don't see that as a strategy. But I, I am glad that there will not be a slew of overnight permits.
Yeah, that was a, there was a little confusion on that. Now I understand Jim's question.
Thank you very much.
If you, make sure, if you didn't sign your name on the clipboard. Anyone else wishing to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 7-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion? I'm talking a little slowly so that Ben can make, here he comes. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 7-2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to the last of three discussions from the public, and this is when you may comment on anything. And as, as always, excuse me, please keep your comments to three minutes or less, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard. Maria?
Diana Mejia, no, Maria, I know. For, for a lot of people, all Latinos wear Marias and Jose, but I'm Diana Mejia. Diana Mejia, 34 Ridgeville Avenue, Madison, New Jersey, 07940. And I'm here just to bring more signatures. I know this resolution passed, even though we, last week, we present 280-plus signatures from adults and 40-plus signatures for children, and I have here 33 more signatures. And say, respectful request the town of Madison, New Jersey to postpone adopting resolution R 57, 2017, and instant consider informing a multicultural task force to work on a resolution Thank you very much.
Want to bring that up? And I will give it to the clerk and it will be distributed. And as mentioned earlier, we will be rolling out with that task force in the near future. Anyone else wishing to comment on any topic?
Thank you.
Don and then Rob.
Should be very quick. There was a fire at the community house. I just wonder whether, can the borough help the community house? Or has the community house raised enough funds to repair the damage? Maybe, I know a couple of members of the council or members of the Thursday Morning Club.
Thankfully, I think most of it will be covered through insurance. You know, they were covered. The worst of the damage was the third floor in the apartment area, some water damage on the lower floors. The back part of the building has been in operation since two days after the fire. And they've, through the help of local churches and others, have been able to, you know, keep business going as usual. So, I think they're in good hands. But as a strong nonprofit, any Madison resident certainly can, you know, reach out to the community house and the Thursday Morning Club to see if they need any assistance. And obviously, our, the support that was given on that day saved it from being a much greater damage. And, you know, our building department works with them to get them back into shape.
Okay, just one other question. Mr. Mayor, do you have any idea what's going to happen with the Bowtie Cinema? Any updated information you have?
Nothing. The sale of the theater closed this past week. And the Bowtie had a month-to-month, and they continue to have a month-to-month with the new owners at this time. And that's all we can really share, so we'll stay tuned.
Still be open for the foreseeable future?
Yep. That's all right. That's your right.
Well, yes, and no, it's... Okay, regarding Resolution 76-2017, if in fact there is a direct familial relationship, I was wondering two questions. I thought there was some sort of rule against that, you know, hiring family members of elected officials. And if there is, how did, if not, great. And I'm happy because I see the business, the jobs going to someone in Madison. If there was, how does it work?
This resolution for those, is the hiring part-time position of Jenna Landrigan. I'll ask Bob Landrigan to take a step out for just a second, and I'll ask our attorney to share the legal opinion.
The legal opinion is that there is not a preclusion for family members to be hired if they have a member who's a member of the governing body. The person who's a member of the governing body must refuse themselves, can't vote on it, can't participate in the discussion, and cannot participate in any subsequent vote or discussion that could impact the family member. The law is clear. It talks about whether or not somebody has a direct or indirect pecuniary interest. And so, you are permitted to, governing bodies can hire family members, but it requires the refusal of that counsel person for any participation whatsoever. The borough also has a nepotism policy, and with that policy, it's in the handbook, and that deals with the supervision of a family member. So, you can't have a family member being the direct supervisor of another family member within the borough. So, legally, it is permissible.
And Matt, just to take a step for it, because I was at workshop down at League of Municipalities, and I, as I mentioned earlier tonight, I got this question wrong because a question is, could you have a relative of an elected official work? And the clarification was spouse, no. Dependent, no. But an adult, child, brother, sister, is not an issue.
That's correct. The rules are different for municipalities than they are for boards of ed.
Thank you.
So, just kind of joking, sorry. So, if, when I had to get my inspection done for the generator I put in, but I couldn't because I was, it was December and I, you know, maybe, so if, like I had an adult son or something, he could have called and he would have got the inspection. I'm just curious.
It's still your house.
It's still my house? That's what it is?
Yep, so that's...
So, then the rule is, the adult child can reside in home or it has to be outside home?
It's adult child.
Adult child.
Yep.
Okay.
Ken Wasick, 68, Prospect, Madison. Hopefully, you haven't created a monster. Question, police officer had one number up and I was very interested in it, which was the increase in burglaries. It seems like there's a threefold increase in burglaries. I don't know if this is a good time to address it. I could ask the council maybe to bring it up in the next meeting. I just, as a concerned citizen, I'm wondering why the big increase in burglaries in Madison? Is there a trend or anything like that?
With six minutes left in the meeting, Chief for, should we, can you get back to Ken on some, on that? And if necessary, maybe report back at a future council meeting? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and we go to introduction of ordinances.
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for Monday, February 27th, 2017. It'll be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 8, 2017 for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 8, 2017, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $140,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for restoration and repair of the James Library Building.
Mayor, I move ordinance 8-2017.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read a statement on consent agenda resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected and full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolutions 58-2017 to Resolution R 76-2017.
I second the motion.
Just as a point of order.
Okay. However you want to, okay.
So, we have the consent, but Councilman Landrigan will...
Can't vote on the laws. I have to abstain, too.
Right.
We should remove those, too. We voted those separately.
Okay, we'll vote on those separately. So, that is the...
Which one would you like?
R 71.
R 71.
And R 76.
Okay, so consent is for those removed.
Okay, do you want me to do it again?
No.
It's okay. Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes, on all except R 76.
No, we're, that's out, so you're okay.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Now on R 71, 2017. We have a motion and a second. Move Resolution 71-2017.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
For the record, Ms. Bailey recused herself.
I move Resolution 76-2017. Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Okay, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
For the current fund, $598,849.18. For the electric operating fund, $16,998.18. And the water operating fund, $43,886.25. The total is $859,711.61.
Mayor, I move approval of vouchers. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
So, two last things of business. One, I'd like to announce a following appointment that does not require council confirmation as to environmental commission. Ryan Monahan, 19 Green Hill Road, for the unexpired three-year term through December 31st, 2017. And also like to make the following two appointments requiring council confirmation